We'll begin in just a minute. Good morning and welcome to the October 6th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Supervisor Slocum? Supervisor TCA is currently absent. President Groom?
Present. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment for those items that are not on the regular agenda or on the consent calendar. We'll begin with Martin Fox.
President Groom, members of the board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpigh and County Councilman Mr. Byers, thank you for your service to the county. Thank you also for voting to provide assisted outpatient treatment to persons living with serious mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily on June 16th. And I thank you for voting for a $3.3 million budget for implementation on September 22nd. As you may recall, the United States Department of Veterans Affairs Healthcare Administration divided responsibility for San Mateo County veterans along a line that puts veterans who live in the 5th District and parts of the 1st and 3rd District into its San Francisco healthcare system and the veterans who live in the other districts into its Palo Alto healthcare system. The VA's regional office indicated both of its healthcare systems would provide outpatient treatment to qualifying veterans of counties that decided to implement LoR's Law. The Veterans Coalition of San Mateo County wishes to thank the San Francisco Medical Center Associate Chief for Mental Health for Psycho-Social Recovery Services Dr. Jennifer Boyd and the Associate Chief for Mental Health for Clinical Administration Dr. John McQuade for hosting a LoR's Law discussion that includes a presentation by the San Francisco Department of Public Health Director of Assisted Outpatient Treatment Dr. Angelica Almedia in its Building 7 Auditorium on the VA's Fort Miley campus this Friday at noon. Dr. Almedia was the Deputy Director of Jail Health Reentry Services in San Francisco. Since the outstanding director of the Palo Alto healthcare system is a resident of our 4th Supervisory District, I hope to report a similar development affecting South County veterans in the near future. I wish to thank you again personally and on behalf of the Veterans Coalition of San Mateo County.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Gladwin D'Souza?
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors for the County of San Mateo. I'm Gladwin D'Souza from Belmont and I'm here on behalf of this Loma Prieta Chapter of the Sierra Club to ask for concurrent funding for the Holly Street Interchange that both the bike component as well as the freeway component are funded at the same time. I spoke to a couple of members on the San Carlos City Council, Mark Olbert, last night, and he said they were also going to ask for concurrent funding and I think both Supervisors Groom and Horsley have indicated that you're going to be working in November to get funding for the bike interchange. And I hope we are able to do that. We're going to ask the Transportation Authority, Transportation Circulation Commission in San Carlos to bring the project back if it's not concurrently funded in order that the community needs are met in what the Transportation and Circulation Commission had asked for when the project was submitted to the Transit Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Souza. I think I should put this in context. Supervisor Horsley and I serve on the Transportation Authority and this issue came up at the last meeting. This is a highway, to what Mr. D'Souza is referring, is a highway project call for funding. And the staff and a subcommittee of the Transit Authority is recommending four projects. They did not recommend the bike pedestrian crossing in San Carlos because it was not considered a highway project. There will be a second call for bike and pedestrians later this year where that will be considered. Because of the public comments during the Transportation Authority meeting, the entire item was put over to the November meeting for further discussion. So, that's that matter. Next, Michelle Griffin?
Sorry, I thought she was talking to me. Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Michelle Griffith and I'm the Principal of Garfield Community School in the Redwood City School District. I am accompanied by Garfield's Assistant Principal Ms. Lupe Torres Khalil and three of our amazing students. And we are here on behalf of not only our families but employees of the Redwood City School District. I know you have heard in the past from our teachers and our students regarding rent control and just cause for eviction. I do not want to diminish any of the struggles that our families are facing due to the exorbitant cost of rentals and housing, but I also want to point out today how the housing costs have affected our employees. Last year alone, Garfield School lost four amazing teachers who because of the cost of housing had to move out of the area and take positions in other places such as Petaluma, Tracy, and Arizona. We have lost out also on potential teachers due to the fact that they cannot afford to pay the housing prices in this area. The increasing cost of housing is pushing both our families and staff out quickly and blocking new families and talented staff from joining our amazing community. Not only are we losing staff that have chosen and are dedicated to the Redwood City School District and to San Mateo County, but we can no longer even bring back former employees that have had to move out of the area to help with substituting and filling in in positions that we need support. In the past, we have been able to hire retired staff to come back to help us and work part-time to provide support, to provide intervention for our students in reading and math, provide substituting and other various things.
That's me. Wow, I didn't know. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Alma Palacios?
Hi, good morning. Dear Board of Supervisors, my name is Alma Palacios. I want San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to support the rent control and just cause for eviction. I am a student at Garfield Community School. I have been in Redwood City for three years. I know that rent is rising and some students have to move because of it. That's why we need rent control. This affects, sorry, this especially affects younger kids. They live here, have friends here, and then one day a landlord raises rent. Parents cannot afford rent, so they have to leave it all behind. When landlords everywhere start raising rent, families sometimes are forced to live in the street. In some other places landlords are just evicting people out of their homes. This benefits landlords. They can get to kick people out and then they rent to people who can afford higher rent. As a result of these problems, Garfield has test kids every year. This is affecting the school, families, and students' educations. Please support the rent control and just cause for eviction in Redwood City and other cities as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Arlene Contreras?
Good morning, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. I am here today to plead you to support rent control and just cause for eviction. My name is Arlene Contreras and I am a student at Garfield Community School. I have had to move because of the rent. Thankfully, we did not have to move very far from my family and still in Redwood City. Other people, though, have not been so lucky. I have had friends and family who have been forced to move far from the families due to the high rent. It is hard for families like mine to move so often because our parents have to find new jobs. Most of the time, it is hard for them because there are not many jobs that will accept parents like mine. It is also hard for them to find a new home because the rent goes up so fast. For example, the rent starts off at $1,200. Later on, it keeps going up until the rent is unaffordable for the family, causing them to move out. I would also like to talk about just cause for eviction. Other families like mine are getting eviction notices for no reason and are forced to leave in a small amount of time so landlords can make renovations and rent it for tenants who are able to afford higher rent. My school loses students as a result. Students have had to leave behind all their learning and start over. Please support rent control and just cause for eviction in San Mateo County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jenny Lemus?
Dear San Mateo County Board, I am here today because I would like you to know that there are renters on the law that can protect them so they don't have to move out for unjust reasons. My name is Jennifer Lemus and I go to Garfield Community School. My family and I sometimes struggle with the rent. We rent a one-bedroom apartment and we pay $2,000. I've seen other families struggle through this as well. I lived in Redwood City for as long as I can remember and we have never struggled so much with rent. We started paying $1,000 for a two-bedroom apartment, but as the years passed, the rent has gotten higher, making it difficult for families to stay in one place. Before moving into my current home, I used to live in a two-bedroom apartment and we wouldn't pay much until some new landlord bought the building and they raised the rent more and more every month. I feel like landlords have target Hispanics. My uncle was kicked out of his former apartment for no reason. The struggle people have to go through is difficult. I think you should try to put an end to this. Please support rent control and just cause for eviction in San Mateo County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank all of you for coming this morning and expressing yourself with such passion. We appreciate hearing from you. We have formed a countywide task force to try to tackle the housing issue. Supervisor Slocum and Supervisor Horsley are co-chairing that. We've had one meeting and we'll continue to work with all of the cities in this county and the housing organizations and many not-for-profit organizations to see if we can't solve this problem. But thank you again for being here today. That is the last speaker card I have, so we will go to item number one, which is the presentation of a resolution.
Is that the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Move to set the regular agenda and approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll go to item number one. This is a resolution honoring and commending the City of San Mateo for their leadership in adopting Vision Zero in the City of San Mateo. So the City of San Mateo has adopted a Sustainable Streets Plan, which lays out, which considers safety first and reduces hopefully traffic accidents and pedestrian accidents in their city. And Mr. Underwood, Mr. Underwood is Director of Public Works, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, please. Thank you, President Groom and honorable supervisors. Thank you for having us here today. Today with me I have Shannon Hagan and David Norris with the San Mateo Police Department and Ken Chin, a former city employee who is lucky enough to be a stay-at-home dad now. So he's resigned from the city a few months ago. But back in February, as you had mentioned, the city council approved the Sustainable Streets Plan. And as part of that plan, we put in place the Vision Zero Program. I will tell you that Vision Zero is targeting so that we don't have any deaths from auto-related accidents, pedestrians, bicycles, or automobile passengers. And the City of San Mateo has always been interested in that. And now we formalized it with this program. I believe at the time when we passed, when we went to the Vision Zero Program, there were only two other cities in the state that were doing that. I don't know if there's others that have been added. But again, we've always been interested in safety of our citizens, but now we have up the game a little bit. So I'd like to thank the board for this honor and also thank the county health system who's been our partner in many of these things as well. And then I'd like to also have Ken Chin come up and maybe give you a few details about the program.
Thank you, Supervisor Groom and the board. I just wanted to read from the actual Sustainable Streets Plan itself of what Vision Zero is. I think Brad did eloquently state what it was, but I'll just read directly from the plan to let you know how we view Vision Zero. Vision Zero is a simple idea that any fatalities on our roadways are unacceptable. Human error is a fact of life, but if we can design our streets to slow down cars and in the process reduce the dangers associated with vehicle travel, we can achieve this vision. This vision itself is more of a long-term vision. It can't be done overnight. There's a lot of things that happen and it's not just for pedestrians, it's not just for bicycles, but also for vehicles as well. And we want to make sure that the roads are safer for everyone. And it can't be done without the partnership with the police department and the rest of the city departments as well. And I also would like to thank the health system and also the school district because they are big partners as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. I want to make a move that we adopt the resolution, support commending City of San Mateo for the Vision Zero. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. I also have a resolution to give you, but a certificate of commendation for Mr. Chin, for Mr. Underwood, for Mr. Patterson, and for Ms. Kleinman. So next?
May I make just a comment?
Sure.
I think this program you're doing is very important and hopefully will encourage other cities to follow in your footsteps. Unfortunately, there was an incident in Burlingame just last week where a student was struck by a vehicle in front of the school. Fortunately, he's okay. But I think we all hear about a lot of close calls with pedestrians and bicyclists. So I think the work you're doing is really important and hopefully it will catch on with other cities. So, thank you.
Yes, as you know, as usual, these programs always seem to begin in Europe and they establish them and then we get them. But congratulations to the City of San Mateo. So item number two is a presentation of a proclamation designating October 15th as the Great California Shakeout Day in San Mateo County. And so every year, communities around the state of California take a moment to pause and be mindful about earthquake safety. So this is an event organized by the Earthquake County Alliance to bring urgency and attention to the need to prepare for the next earthquake. And that always means, do you have plenty of water in your house? Do you have plenty of blankets? Do you have them all packed up in order to take them right out with you? And so we want to make sure that everybody's aware of all those earthquake safety tips. On October 15th at 11:00 a.m., everybody is asked to practice the drill to responds to the protocol of drop, cover, and hold on. And the County of San Mateo will participate in that event. So I want to recognize the county employees who are participating, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and the Emergency Response Coordinators. This group was established in 2015 in order to completely staff our county EOC and be prepared for things like earthquakes. So now I would like to ask Deputy County Manager Raina Feralis to tell us more about this. And I would like to move that we accept the proclamation on the Great California Shakeout Day.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Raina?
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Malpigh, Mr. Byers. On behalf of the county's Emergency Response Coordinators and the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, I want to thank the board for this proclamation. This is the county's second Great Shakeout Drill that we'll be doing this year. It's a great reminder for all of us that we are disaster service workers by law and that we need to be prepared for emergencies at work as well as at home. So the drill will take place next Thursday, October 15th. If you have not signed up for SMC alerts, notices, and alerts, please do so. We will start at 10 o'clock. There will be an alert sent out at 10 o'clock to all county employees. And then at 11 o'clock, all the floor leaders and emergency response coordinators will direct county staff and the public to drop, cover, and hold on for one to two minutes and then evacuate safely to designated assembly areas. We expect the drill to take place for about an hour until the all-clear is made and all departments have reported in with their counts. So, and then we'll also do a debrief and a quick survey after the drill. I want to say thank you to Captain Jeff Kirin and all the staff at OES, especially Don Matei, Jeff Norris, and Steve Mahaly. Also to all of our work group leaders, this is a very active and engaged group of county employees. I want to thank the leads, Teresa Smith from the Health System, Alicia Kelly, who's our Risk Manager, Michelle Duran from the County Manager's Office, Beverly Thames from the Information Services Department, and also all of the Emergency Response Coordinators and Departments. And we look forward to working with all of our departments this coming year to fully staff the Emergency Operations Center and also to complete our continuity of operations plans, or what are called COOPS. So thank you again for this proclamation and for the board's support throughout the year around emergency preparedness and the drill this year.
Thank you. Let me give you this proclamation, Raina.
Excellent.
Last item for the presentations and awards. October is Disabilities Awareness Month. And I'm very pleased, as all of us are, that we have such an active and strong commission on disabilities in this county, who serves as our eyes and ears in the public and serves as kind of a watchdog to make sure that we are up to speed on the American with Disabilities Act and that those people who have disabilities can navigate throughout our county with ease and without having to worry about doors not being in the right place and steps being ramps and all of the things that make access so important. So I would move that we accept the proclamation recognizing October as Disabilities Awareness Month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would like to present this to the President of the Board, the President of the Commission on Disabilities, Susie Castoria, and she and her group. There's a number of members of the Commission on Disabilities here today and Susie will acknowledge them.
I only brought a small book of a speech, so. Good morning, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Byers, Mr. Malpigh. I'm Susie Castoria, President of the Commission on Disabilities. And today in the audience, we have a large number of my fellow commissioners. If you could all wave or stand or whatever when I call your names. Charlie Welldance, Gwendolyn Bernhardt, Vincent Marola, Lickia Androni, Romero Maldonado, and Sky Parker are all here. Did I miss anybody? Some people walked in after I made my list. And we also have in the audience one of our participating community organizations, and that's KINOS. And I'd like to shout out a hello to everybody at KINOS. Hi, KINOS, thanks for coming. And we also have staff, Craig, with whom I couldn't do anything, and Lisa's here, as is Louise Rogers. So thank you all for coming and thank you for giving us time to bring you up to date on what we're doing this year. 2015 has been a very big year for us. We've celebrated the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And our biggest event for this was the ADA Symposium we did in this room on April 30th. The ADA Compliance Committee and the Commission worked with, I think, most departments in the county. Certainly County Council was very strong in its help HR, County Manager's Office, as well as members of the community who helped us define what we wanted to say. It was an update and a review of Title II, the public access to community services, part of the law, because the law itself is a little too big to do in one symposium. We had, oops, lost my place. With the symposium, we tried to focus on the many types of disabilities and the logo that Christine Hollander developed for us. She works at Real Properties and she did this logo for us on our buttons and it says, "I am the ADA." It's a fairly inclusive button. We also made a video, and I don't know if you've all seen it. It's "You Can't Get There From Here." And if you Google it on YouTube, you have to do "You Can't Get There From Here ADA." Otherwise, there's an R.E.M. song that has about 300 videos. Not that one. Also, I also want to thank both Mina and Terry for all the work they did in this room getting the symposium put together. We will be having it up on LMS in the very near future, as soon as I get the editing done. The ADA Compliance Committee, as Supervisor Groom alluded to, has been busy with site evaluations for physical barriers within the county. We look at properties that are either owned, such as 225 37th Avenue, or leased. And this year, we did 15 site evaluations. We're working hard with Noel Manuel at DPW on 225, and that's by far going to be the biggest project for barrier removal that we've done in quite a while. Our Legislative Advocacy and Outreach Committee has done five presentations this year. They're listed on the board. And the Youth and Family Committee will be hosting the Transition Independence Fair this Saturday. It's at Hillsdale High. It's from 12 to 3? 12 to 3. We have over 40 vendors. Last year, it was much smaller and we had 160 family and family members show up. So this year, it's going to be a much bigger event and we invite all of you to come. It'll be extremely interesting. One of the South San Francisco school program students designed the poster that's up there right now. So they've been, the transition specialists from the school districts have been extremely busy working for this fair. The Special Events Committee is presenting the annual art show. The art is hanging right now in the hall, so be sure and pick your favorites because the auction and reception are October 20th. And we want to... projects and updating the transition plan, which is going to be a very good thing, because we got noticed two weeks ago that there will be an ADA audit of the county through the Department of Transportation. And we're going to be working with Alicia Kelly, who is also our Title II coordinator, and probably County Council will be involved, but we think from their letter that we're pretty much on base for what we're doing. And with that, we're going to, well, continue celebrating the 25th anniversary. Oh, COD. The COD's 25th anniversary. I need to get my glasses fixed. That's next year, that's right. We were a year after the ADA passed. We were founded by this board. And our goals for 2016, our overall goal, will be inclusion, and we hope that by the time the year ends, every organization or department in the county, when they plan an event, thinks, "Are we including everyone? Not just the COD, not just your department, but is everyone included in your plans, and have you made arrangements for them?" And we, of course, want to be a resource for that. And thank you all for your support, and as it says, a special shout-out to Supervisor Grimm for being our liaison. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Castoria, and congratulations to the Commission on Disabilities and the staff for the huge amount of work that gets accomplished. And think about the foresight of this county, forming a Commission on Disabilities 25 years ago and still going strong. So congratulations, and thank you all for your very hard work.
Thank the Commission for all the work that goes into this, and Susie, thank you for your leadership. It's appreciated and recognized. Two quick comments. One, I'm really looking forward to the art show this year, and hopefully I won't be outbid this year. And I want you to know that I have one of the pieces that I got last year. I think I actually outbid County Council buyers on hanging in my office.
I'm not bitter.
My question relates to voting and the process. I know several years ago, Craig and I worked on an extensive program to make voting easier for people with disabilities, and I'm curious about, right now, we're in this vote-by-mail period, and I know that's going on, but I also know there's a committee that's been, I think, formed, and maybe you could just touch on those two things just briefly for me.
Certainly, I can. Thank you. It's a good question. We're working with Mr. Church of the Elections Office, and he has formed a VAC, a Voter Accessibility Advisory Committee. Thank you. And it has met twice now, and we'll be working closely with them to be sure that all polling places, if we have polling places, they'll be accessible. And in fact, the Elections Office is doing some ADA upgrades at their facility right now. So it is underway, and we're still working on it. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor Pine?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank my colleague Supervisor Grimm and the Commission, and Craig and the staff for the good work they've done in this area. For many years, I was very involved in special education advocacy, so I have a pretty good perspective on challenges that children face who have disabilities. But as a generalization, you know, when students exit that system, it can be, you know, the infrastructure is not the same, and the work of this committee to support everyone across the spectrum with disabilities is much needed and appreciated.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. Okay. That concludes our presentations and awards. We'll now go to the regular agenda with item number five, the 2015 Public Safety Realignment Act report. Deputy Manager Callagie.
Good morning, President Grimm, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. This is Mike Callagie, Deputy County Manager. It's my honor to give you what we hope to be an Anna Report on the history, or on realignment. And let me start with the history of realignment. California Public Safety Realignment Act of 2011, or Assembly Bill 109 and other subsequent legislation shifted the jurisdiction and funding for the supervision and incarceration of specific low-level felony offenders from state to local control, mostly to deal with overcrowding conditions in our state prisons. This, of course, was the biggest change in our criminal justice system in the last century. It's really impacted the low-level offenders who are nonviolent, nonserious, and nonsexual. And there was really three components of this legislation that impacted us. And the first component was 1178, those convicted of nonserious, nonviolent, nonsexual crimes who would have normally spent their time in state prison were shifted to local jurisdiction and spent their time in the county jail. The second area was the PRCSs, the post-release community supervision. These were the individuals who were nonviolent, nonsexual, nonserious that would have been on state parole. They were shifted to a local probation for supervision. And finally, those parolees that violated their parole and would have gone back to state prison were going to spend their time and will be spending their time in county jail. And I think our Sheriff's Office will talk about some of the challenges that they faced in that regard. Some of the key findings in this report, this report looked at approximately 1,500 of the AB 109 participants who were on probation from October 2011 through April 2015. Of the 1,500 participants studied, 53.4% were 1178ers and 46.6% were PRCSs, and that's something that we certainly thought was normal, and we'll see that PRCS population decline as we move forward. Most of the AB 109 offenders on probation were males, clearly a large majority, and they were between the age of 23 to 43. And the study shows as you get beyond 43, it starts to drop off very quickly. The most common ethnicity was white, and the primary commitment offense for the PRCS population and the 1178 population was for property and drug-related offenses. And for those who did recidivate within the three years, it was predominantly, again, property and drug-related offenses, and this was no surprise since, really, the drug offense is what drives the property-related crimes, and this is why it was so important and really underscores what you all did several weeks ago in stabilizing those drug treatment programs that's so necessary. So since October 2011, our recidivism rate for those who have come back to the system on probation has been 26.6%. It's a remarkable percentage, a low percentage, and, you know, I really attribute this to the incredible work that our departments have done working together. In the coming years, we hope to really refine that data, to really understand those who are coming back into the county jail and being charged right as they enter the county jail, and we'll continue to work on that. The biggest byproduct that we have seen in the AB 109 legislation is the incredible collaboration of our criminal justice system. The department heads and the men and women on the front lines have simply done a remarkable job. You know, our probation department, our Sheriff's Office, HSA through Service Connect, Correctional Health, BHRS, and though not here today, and not one of our service departments, certainly our DA's office, have been incredible collaborators. They have really worked to create a seamless system of evaluation and customization of services that really has acted to reduce recidivism, to reunite families, and to go to the heart of the criminogenic behavior that these individuals have engaged in. And what it has resulted in is a better system of public safety. You know, from the time they enter the jail now and are in custody, the Sheriff's Office is looking at the reentry process. They're creating MDTs to determine what are the best services for these individuals. And the same thing with Correctional Health. They're really looking at the individual and customizing plans for them. And then once they're released, they go to our incredible AB 109 unit in probation, who intensive supervision and referrals do just a remarkable job. And then our collaborative services that, you know, award-winning services through Service Connect has really been something very special and has had a profound impact on these individuals. So what I'd like to do is stop there, and I'll come back with the recommendations at the end, but I'd like to get our department heads up to talk about the services they provide. So with that, I'll ask Chief John Keen to come up from probation and talk about probation.
Good morning, Supervisors. I should just say ditto to Tom. I mean, I tell Mike to sit back down, because quite frankly, he said pretty much everything that I intended to say, but I have just a few talking points that I wanted to hit with regard to our section of the report. The probation department is committed to providing evidence-based supervision programs for the folks that we have the ability to serve. As mentioned before, our recidivism rate is at 26.6%, which we're very proud of. We think that there is more work that can be done, but we really believe this is a great opportunity for us to kind of build upon the work that's been done at this point. As previously stated, crimes are mostly involved, property and drug-related crimes. If you look at the 10 most common crimes of original sentence, seven of the top eight are either property or drug crimes. And as Mike alluded to, I think it's a really critical point for us to recognize the correlation between those two situations. Contributing factors to our low recidivism rate is our use of the Case Management or Correctional Assessment Intervention System assessment, called the CASE. It really ensures that we're able to hone in on the specific criminogenic needs and risk of our offenders. On average, the realigned population, both AB 109 and 1178, the offenders classified between medium and high risk, with the needs primarily focusing on substance abuse and mental health issues. Generally, our AB 109 offenders, our PRCS only, are classified as either medium or low risk and fall under what we call the casework and control supervision strategy. This actually means that these individuals have skills to really work hard and actually do well and not recidivate. They just need additional support around training, sometimes educational needs, and actually case management to help them reach their goals, which is really actually a very opportune thing for us as a service group, because we know that our folks are willing and have the ability to change. Our deputy probation officers continue to make contacts with our realigned population, both in the field, at their homes, in place of appointments, as well as in office visits. We really feel strongly about our continued collaboration with our partners inside and out of the county. Things of note, we recognize that the out-of-county supervision numbers continue to be somewhat high. Primarily, the numbers that we see most are coming from San Francisco. The reality is many of our offenders were unable to transfer them because they owe either restitution to victims or have other offenses or other terms or conditions that didn't allow for us to transfer them at this time. We're going to work closely with those folks, and we have done so by allowing them to be seen through our South San Francisco office, which hopefully makes it a little bit easier for the individuals to be seen. But we're encouraging people from other counties to go to their counties for services. We try hard to work with the individuals we have here, but we do recognize that the services should be primarily focused on our San Mateo County residents. With regard to Proposition 47, we have not been able to fully assess the impacts of Prop 47 on our realigned population, but as of June 30th, we've had 43 of our realigned offenders have some of their charges reduced as a result of Proposition 47. Our current caseload averages as of August this year, PRCS are at 209. Our mandatory supervisions are 1178ers currently standing at 157, and the average caseload size for our probation officers are 45. One last note I'll make is that because we have a population that we feel that we can work with, we're going to be moving forward with actually trying to expand our services and dive a little deeper into some more quality of life things to hopefully improve the status of our offenders. We're going to try to work with more family engagement opportunities, focusing really around fathers. We're going to look to see if there are other things we can do around additional mental health needs, and obviously try to work on long-term, sustainable housing and employment options for the folks that we serve. So with that, unless you have specific questions with me, I will hand this off to Assistant Sheriff Tom Gallagher.
Just on the case, I guess you have three different opportunities to do essentially interviews with the client. Is it a series of similar questions?
Yes, it is. It's a semi-structured interview process. There are questions that you can ask, but ultimately, what we want to do utilizing an evidence-based modality called motivation interviewing, we try to really engage in a conversation and hope that over a period of time, we'll get a lot of the answers to the questions we have. What we've tried to focus and move away from is this kind of close-centered, close question, yes, no, because ultimately, we know sometimes our folks are not necessarily happy to see us at that moment. So it's better to engage them in a more client-centered, semi-structured kind of interview process.
What kind of training do your DPOs have to do that interview?
So the motivation interviewing training is a very intensive training we offer. It's all of our staff, not just simply the ones that are working with the realigned population. It's a several-day training, and then it includes also updates every year. And we're actually trying to further utilize motivation interviewing by really reviewing our deputies' practices. We use video recordings of them to critique their practice, to see if they're doing well. It's probably the cornerstone of evidence-based work that we hope to do in our department. Motivation interviewing is, it sounds very technical, but quite frankly, it's what most people do really well, who are great communicators. They tend to get people to open up to them without a lot of work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Keen.
Thank you.
Good morning, President Grimm, Supervisors, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure to speak to you today regarding the Sheriff's Office area of responsibility as it relates to realignment and custody services. During my presentation, I'm going to share with you our involvement, a few statistics, a couple of anecdotal stories, anecdotal stories, and where we're going from here, and certainly field any questions. Housing inmates for longer term was not just a change for the criminal justice system, it was a significant change for our inmates, many of which had already been exposed to state-prison way of life, and prison life is significantly different than county jail life. Although we are adapting, we will continue to pose challenges for both groups. Collectively, the criminal justice, health services, and community-based organizations face the challenge and continue to work together to ensure we successfully operate under the constraints of realignment. We will continue to help people off the recidivism track and find a correct path to recovery, increase their self-esteem, and help them be a part of a healthy, livable, prosperous, environmentally conscious, and collaborative community. Specific to the realignment population, as Chief Keen mentioned, we're also using the case system, which provides concrete supervision strategies and recommends programs most likely to produce success. Case can lead to more effective and efficient use of worker time and lessens offenders' time on supervision. So essentially, this gives us an opportunity to spend more time with those offenders who require more services or supervision. We also using Aspire, which provides an enhanced continuum of care through appropriate structuring of inmates while they are in custody. We use our case managers to build a relationship with inmates and get them to where they want to be. In fact, we've opened an entire pod for this program, and we've added four new programs just this past year. We have a staff of six specifically assigned to work with the realignment inmates. They oversee the programming, including activities such as Mother-Father with Families and our tails program, educational, such as critical thinking skills, religious, such as our spiritual retreats, services such as NA and NA. Collectively, the criminal justice, health services, and community-based organizations face the challenge and continue to work together to ensure we successfully operate under the constraints of realignment. We will continue to help people off the recidivism track and find a correct path to recovery, increase their self-esteem, and help them be a part of a healthy, livable, prosperous, environmentally conscious, and collaborative community. Specific to the realignment population, as Chief Keen mentioned, we're also using the CASE system, which provides concrete supervision strategies and recommends programs most likely to produce success. CASE can lead to more effective and efficient use of worker time and lessens offenders' time on supervision. So essentially, this gives us an opportunity to spend more time with those offenders who require more services or supervision. We also using ASPIRE, which provides an enhanced continuum of care through appropriate structuring of inmates while they are in custody. We use our case managers to build a relationship with inmates and get them to where they want to be. In fact, we've opened an entire pod for this program, and we've added four new programs just this past year. We have a staff of six specifically assigned to work with the realignment inmates. They oversee the programming, including activities such as mother, father with families and our tails program, educational, such as critical thinking skills, religious, such as our spiritual retreats, services such as NA and NA, and cognitive programs such as our Enneagram Prison Project. Of course, we also continue to do our culinary program and work with Job Train. During the last 12 months, the straight sentence averages with our realignment population was 167 days, and then the split sentence average was 212 days, and then they do their probation service after that. On average, non-1170H inmate custody is 43 days. In general, there has been a noticeable increase in violence on staff from an average of 12 assaults to 20 per year. Although the realignment population accounts for a small portion of the 67% increase, it does reflect our population is becoming more difficult to manage. And I believe Sheriff Monks shared this story with many of you. Demondre Reed, a former inmate who participated in the culinary program and Job Train, received the Giants Employee of the Year Award at AT&amp;T last week. So that's a big deal, especially since it's an odd year and he got an award. I spoke with an Enneagram graduate, who I will refer to as a career criminal, as basically we started our careers together. He told me he learned how to deal with others based on a better understanding of self, and he said enough. The Enneagram Prison Project is a self-awareness program. The curriculum is designed to support participants in taking 100% responsibility for their thoughts and emotional reactivity, and ultimately, their outward behavior. You may have heard during this past weekend, our patrol deputies responded to an alarm in the city of San Mateo, where we arrested four men for burglary, possession of stolen property, and linked them to crimes in surrounding counties. These four men are out of the Los Angeles area. Three of them are Sereno gang members, and two are unsupervised PRCS from LA County. I mention it because if the two are charged, they won't necessarily reflect in our recidivism rate within our county, and that's something we need to be cognizant of with other counties as well, if ours reoffends somewhere else. Moving forward, we will work collaboratively with other agencies throughout the state to better monitor the realignment population and its true effect on our communities, including reducing recidivism. We need to address the 58 different systems throughout the state trafficking, realignment issues, and probationers, and remain cognizant that none of these individuals fall through the cracks. During our population study, we will continue to use both data and anecdotal stories to gauge the change in our population, address our staffing need for both Maguire and Maple Street Correctional Facility, and increase training for staff to work with inmates with longer sentences. In closing, I might not be a recognized expert in programs or why people relapse, but I've dealt with many people in real-life situations. I can tell you this, no one program works for everyone. If there is one program that works for everyone, I'd like to know that diet that keeps the weight off. Changing our lifestyle path takes help. It takes providing programs and opportunities for individuals to accept responsibility, desire change, and say enough. The sheriff's office understands we need to be there for that enough and help get the individuals on their correct path and keep them off the track of recidivism and let them participate in our shared vision. Thank you, and any specific questions?
Supervisor Pye.
Thanks for your presentation. Two things. If I heard you correctly, if a San Mateo County, you know, person reoffends, but outside of the county, I guess there's no ability to track that as in our recidivism count. Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Right. And I guess it's, you know, hard. We don't have any, do we get any data on that?
Well, I think...
The systems probably don't communicate.
Yeah. The issue right now is just trying to better communicate throughout all the 58 different counties, ensuring that departments, first off, put a person who is on PRCS into a statewide system, so that if we make contact with them, we know right off the bat that they are on PRCS, because a lot of times, we might be dealing with people that are on that supervised PRCS, and they're not actually in the statewide system. So we wouldn't know that we were dealing with that type of person. Now, we're pretty fortunate in our county that we know all the people that are on PRCS because our probation department enters everybody into the statewide system. So surrounding areas would know if our people were on that.
Oh, I see. Okay. And also, could you tell us a little bit more about the study, the jail study, population study, that I guess will be conducted in the spring?
Sure. What, you know, as you're well aware of, we're opening a new facility, and one of the things that we're looking at or we're going to do is close down another portion of the correctional system, closing down Old Maguire. And so we want to start taking a look at what is our staffing level, our staffing needs for the level of population that we're serving. Now, as I mentioned, well, as a side note, our jail population has actually kind of spiked back up. We're at 800 today in the men's jail. It had been down in the low 700s. So quite frankly, I cannot tell you what the specific reason is. We did see some spikes based on San Quentin was not accepting state prisoners for a while because of conditions at their facility, and so that adjusted part of our population. But we're going to take a look at, based on the type of inmate that we're housing, type of programs that we're offering, what is the true staffing level that we need to operate both facilities? And that's our goal from, once we finish the ground floor build-out in Maple Street of June 16 through June 2017.
Thank you.
Tom, could you talk a little bit about ASPIRE? And you also do some case interviews as well. Do you have the same as your, is it deputy sheriffs or corrections officers that do your case or ASPIRE?
We have, we have six people assigned to it, and they're basically case managers. So they have similar training that the probation department received on interviewing inmates, and they basically work one-on-one with the inmates to figure out which program works best for them while they're in custody. And then they also take a look at what program's going to work for them when they leave custody. So they will help them to achieve that goal. But they're non-sworn staff professionals.
Does that help you at all in terms of predicting who would be, you know, acting out and assaulting your COs?
So I think, not totally. Not, those interviews are not totally. More of the classification unit would be determining who's going to be acting out. And then, you know, again, it's early. We just really started looking at it, why we're getting a increase in the violence. And, you know, it's no mystery that correctional health is doing, you know, everything possible, but we do have a large mental health population, a population that has mental health issues. And we're lucky that we work collaboratively with them to, you know, during their interview process and their case management, but there's a lot of little triggers out there that happen.
Thanks, Tom.
Supervisor Slocum?
I'm not sure who's, who might be able to answer this question, but I read, I think, 43.7% of the people on intake talked about needing employment, if I read that right. And then there were 12 people referred to Job Train in the report. So I'm wondering, just kind of generally about the job situation and what that placement rate might be, and did all 12 people that went to Job Train get, you know, employed? Sort of what is the situation with employment with these folks?
I believe Nicole Pollak, who's going to speak after me, is going to address some of that stuff.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Gallagher.
Okay, so I'd invite Nicole up.
One more question. Sorry, one more question.
This question maybe is for Mr. Gallagher, I'm not sure. Sorry. But in the memo or the report, it talks about a pilot program for a Bellhaven area, and I'm curious to know if the David Lewis Center has capacity for that program and what that program might look like.
Yes, and I'll be speaking to that right at the end of this presentation to talk about next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Pollak.
Good morning. Do we have power? PowerPoint, okay, thank you. Good morning, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Malp and Mr. Byers. I am Nicole Pollak, the Assistant Director with the Human Services Agency, and I'm happy to present or highlight our services and success stories as part of the AB 109 realignment report on behalf of our agency director, Eliana Rodriguez, who could not be here today. So talking a little bit about the Service Connect support model. HSA is proud to be a partner with our colleagues in realignment, and our Service Connect model is primarily with probation and health system. It was recognized by CSAC, California State Association of Counties, in 2012. And what we, the center of our model, of course, is the client. Ultimately, we start by providing what we recall or refer to as a safety net bundle. And the safety net bundle includes motel vouchers for homeless participants to offer short-term temporary housing while they reconnect with their families. We also offer clothing vouchers and bus passes and food assistance if needed. From that piece, what we're doing is working with our partners. We're assessing. We provide and refer to mental health services, substance abuse recovery, pro-social peer support, and I'll talk a little bit about that, vocational counseling, jobs, family support, as well as medical referrals. So that is the, the client is in the center, and that is the hub of our Service Connect model. This model ultimately shows that, number one, we connect and assess, stabilize and support, and ultimately guides the client to a positive path and self-sufficiency. So one of our key strategies is building trust, and that starts at the very beginning with the warm handoff from probation to Service Connect. We want our clients to know that we are here for support as they complete their probation supervision. Our staff builds and models positive relationships with the participants as we learn about their barriers and also case-manage them as they reach their goals. This can take the form of supporting clients as they actively overcome substance abuse, finding and holding employment, or relearning how to reconnect with their families and living in a productive and pro-social manner. No one understands the challenges our clients face more than others who have shared the experience of incarceration. At Service Connect, peer mentors are available on both the daytime and nighttime hours to offer that extra support. The peer mentors are formerly incarcerated individuals who have shown success in re-entering the community and are able to provide coaching to our clients who are within the Service Connect program. So we link our clients with a peer mentor where they know that they can be successful and they can, the peer mentors can model success. They also coordinate support groups to openly share and talk about issues, challenges, and also to encourage pro-social behaviors. Finding and holding employment is an obstacle our clients can face after release. Some of our clients already have job skills and need help re-entering the labor market. More often than not, our clients have limited marketable skills. The 550 Jobs Program places clients in a temporary job at the work center. The clients gain recent work experience, recent work history. At the same time, our employment specialists assess their needs and their job skills and are coaching and mentoring that. Our clients learn soft skills, and we assist them with resume writing, job search, and job development. I'd like to share a success story with you. Michael had limited employment history prior to working with Service Connect. He was able to develop his skills by working at the Catering Connection where he learned food prep and culinary skills. In the process, Michael earned the Food Safety Training Certificate, which led to subsidized placement in a local bakery. Michael continued his job search with us through our job development and job assistance programs and was offered a full-time position at a local restaurant. Today, Michael is gainfully employed and has successfully completed the terms of his probation. As you can see in your board report, the majority of our clients are male, and some of them are fathers and have been absent from their children's lives due to incarceration and have, therefore have an strained relationship with their families and need to rebuild family connections with their children as well. When appropriate, and the father and family are both ready, our staff helps to build the bridge to reconnect with children and re-establish a healthy parental bond. We coordinate a family event once a month for our clients. This month, we're actually going to the pumpkin patch for Halloween. Our support services are more than just hosting events. We help facilitate our clients with child support if necessary and ensuring fathers support their children both emotionally and financially. I would like to thank the board and County Manager's Office for your support. The Service Connect staff and clients are successful because of your support and collaborative working relationships with our partner agencies. And I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Supervisor Horsley.
I just have one question. I was sort of wondering about, you know, Supervisor Slocum was talking about jobs, but one of the things that I thought about, especially because we had some young kids talking about rising rents, I would assume one of the major problems for people coming out of jails, not only is jobs, but it's also housing.
Sure.
And are they, are they able to find housing in San Mateo County, or do they move in with relatives or friends, or do they leave the county?
Well, what we're seeing is, in the very beginning, I mentioned the safety net bundle, and so that is really to offer just emergency vouchers. At the same time, we're trying to help them reconnect with their families so they can have more of a stable living environment. But through the motel voucher program, they can also utilize transitional housing and supportive living. So housing, yes, is an issue. Hopefully, they'll reengage with their families and alleviate some of the housing concerns. But also, we're, you know, our jobs that we provide at the work center are subsidized employment, so they're able to earn a wage to help them then sustain within this county.
Do we really track that they're able to stay? If, I assume if they have a family who are stable already, they can, in fact, maybe go back to them.
Yes.
But if they don't, are they leaving the county, and are we tracking that?
That may be a question better answered by probation as far as tracking the probationers. So I don't have the answer to that, but I'd be happy to find out for you.
Well, we could talk offline about that. Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome. Supervisor Pye.
A question about Service Connect. It's always been a very impressive program, but it's my understanding that, again, it's focused on the AB 109 population, and are we looking at expanding that to the broader inmate population?
Yes, we also, thank you for the question, Supervisor Pye, and we also offer the same services to the Unified Reentry Population, the 1170H PCRS population as well. So in our future plans, we plan on working more collaboratively with the David Lewis Reentry Center. So we do plan on expanding that.
Yeah, because it seems like it's been quite effective.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to bring us back to jobs again. Do we, maybe this is too specific, but of the total number of folks that are getting released, do we have information on how many of those secure employment?
We do. So as of October 2012, we received 236 AB 109 referrals, of which 163 clients were employed. And this is not including the temporary work center experience. So some of the clients, you'll notice the 163 out of the 236, there may be other items that they're working on and they're not quite ready for employment. For example, if they're actively engaged in recovering from substance abuse or are seeking other services through mental health, they may be working toward employability but are not quite ready yet for the employment field.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Luis Rogers.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malp and Mr. Byers. The health system is really proud to be part of this outstanding partnership that has been facilitating the response to criminal justice realignment and really focused on improving outcomes for all of the people coming out of jail as 1170Hs and coming back from the state as PRCSs. The health system's goal in the circle of support that Nicole described, of course, is to identify the medical, mental health, and alcohol and drug treatment needs that people have and to respond to those as early as possible so that people can be successful re-entering the community and recovering their lives. And we do that by partnering with the probation department for the folks that are coming back from the state as early as possible. We do have the ability to know for people coming back from the state most of the time if they have a very serious... if they have a very serious illness that they're struggling with. And by partnering with the sheriff's office within the jail through Correctional Health Services to identify people who need services there to begin receiving that treatment and then to be linked to Service Connect upon discharge. And I think it's very promising that the retention rate, at least to date in the effort, is about 72%. We believe that one of the major factors to the success is really the peer strategies that Nicole described. In addition to being so closely intertwined with human services in Service Connect, I think one of the most innovative services that we're offering through Service Connect is attempting to link people really proactively to the medical care that they need. We learned very shortly after realignment started that at least a third of the individuals were becoming routine users of our emergency department for their medical care, and that was very concerning. And through the partnership, we were able to bring in the mobile health van as well as a nurse practitioner several times a week to the Service Connect site to really incentivize through providing physicals for jobs, which of course, people are very motivated to receive, to really incentivize linkage to medical care more proactively. In closing, I really want to underscore that really the most important things that we can be doing in order to help the people be successful in treatment is providing a full range of housing options, as well as, followed closely by jobs. I think you all will not be surprised to know, just on the hierarchy of human needs, that having stable housing is absolutely critical. The data that you saw in the report, as well as each of the personal anecdotes, shows that housing is a major factor for these folks. It's expressly evident in nearly half of the cases, and that does not include all of the people who, from the very beginning, may be couch-surfing, living with a family member. So I warrant that the, the actual extent of need is far greater than that. And so, of course, we're not successful engaging people in treatment when they're very worried about where they're going to spend their next evening. So housing is absolutely critical for stability, having a full range of options, and then followed closely, I would say, by employment. Really having hope is integrally related to having prospects for a job, and having hope is integrally related to being successful in treatment. So we are eager to continue to partner around improving the prospects for stable housing for these folks as well as for jobs. And we believe that's probably the most, those are the most important priorities that we would put forth at this point. Thank you very much for your support on each step of the way, and I'd be delighted to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Ms. Rogers, thank you very much.
Just very quickly in closing, because I know we're pressed for time, the five areas of, you know, for our future direction are things that we've really talked about, the expanded services, and that encompasses treatment, mental health support services, employment and housing, so important. That was really number one for us. And then the, number two, the integrated service for all county justice-involved individuals. And Supervisor Slocum, to your point, we do have a declining PRCs population. We do have a winning model here, we know that. And we want to use that model to bring expanded services to those outside the AB 109 population. So we do have a capacity at the David Lewis Reentry Center to initiate a pilot program with state parole that'll take 25 parolees in from, from East Mellow and East Palo Alto area and really bring them those coordinated services through the David Lewis Reentry Center. So we're very excited about that. And if it is successful, state parole has pledged to, to work with us to, to fund those operations in the future. The jail population study, Assistant Sheriff Gallagher talked about that, that was number three. The data collection and sharing, really, we look to expand our data collection and bring you better data. And, you know, Ms. Feralis, as she moved forward, Deputy, Deputy County Manager Feralis, that's a specialty of hers, I'm sure that she'll expand upon that that we have now. And then really, the, the local implementation plan, it's been some time since we've looked at that. The criminal justice partners will get back together and refine that to be more reflective of where we're at today. And in closing, you know, as I leave the criminal justice system, you know, I want to give, our goal was to provide you a comprehensive report, and I really want to give Connie Oras DeRoll from our office a great deal of credit for putting this comprehensive report together. She's done a terrific job, and Jason Escarino has really helped out from our office also. And in closing, for me, I just want to say that it has been nothing short of an honor and a privilege to work with our criminal justice partners. I honestly believe, and I've traveled around the state, I honestly believe that, that we have the best in, in this state when it comes to that criminal justice partnership and the award-winning model that we've created here. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, just three quick ones. How are we, how are other counties doing? You know, we, our numbers are very impressive, 26.6%, you know, recidivism. Do we have a sense, I mean, is that, that's got to be among the top in the state. Do we have a sense for the state averages?
It is. We haven't looked at all of them throughout the state, but from the reports that we've seen so far, that is certainly one of the, one of the tops. And again, I really give the credit to our, our partnership here, our criminal justice partners, who really work collaboratively and created a great model.
Are the parts in the state getting down to this 30% goal, or are we?
Well, I mean, I think it certainly varies. Some of the larger counties are still struggling with that, with that goal. But that is, you know, the state's goal for everyone.
Gotcha. And are we, we tracking recidivism of the non-109 population? You know, we have this new definition of recidivism. Do we, do we have data about recidivism for the rest of the population?
You know, I, I don't think we do, because what, we've created a special system for those, and we've put them in Social Solutions, that's the, that's the software we use through Hardering Company, to really track this population. And we're going to expand that and, and really offer that to our, our CBOs, our partners out there. So we'll have an idea of what services they're also receiving outside the county. So we really want to track this population, but certainly we could, in the future, do that with, with our other population.
And then finally, on, on the San Francisco population, you know, it's really, it's really kind of jumps out at you that they're in the number two spot of, you know, Redwood City is 166.
Right.
And the next is San Francisco, 129, ahead of East Palo Alto, ahead of Daly City, ahead of San Mateo. And I think it was mentioned that, you know, there are some limitations on our ability to have San Francisco provide the services to this population. Now, I, I wonder if any legislative change would be worthwhile considering there. I mean, again, that's a big chunk of the population that aren't our residents.
Absolutely. And I know that Chief Keane is working to give that population for supervision purposes back to San Francisco, because that's probably the, the most appropriate place to have them supervised. But you're, you're absolutely right. We, we should, in this state, have a statewide system that'll be able to let us track those on AB 109.
Or again, have the city of San Francisco responsible for their services. As I understand it, if you're charged and convicted in a county, regardless of your residence, you, you spend your, your jail time in the county.
Right.
But once they're released, we hope, and it would seem to make sense for the, the city of San Francisco to pick up this, this effort. But I guess there's limits on that. So I'd be curious to know if there's any legislative possibilities there.
And we can definitely look into that.
Supervisor Horsley?
I just want to make a quick comment. I know we're kind of pressed for time. We have, actually, we're a little over time, but just want to commend human services, the health department, sheriff's office, probation, the CMO's office, and your leadership as well. I used to kind of joke that I spent more time, because I spent a lot of time in jails and the correction system, I spent more time in jails than some people who were sentenced to jail. And this is the most comprehensive system that I've ever seen. And so I really congratulate everybody. It's, and the system used to be very siloed. You've broken down those silos, and so I congratulate you and the, the team.
Thank you.
I would just echo that and make one small request, if possible. Following up on Supervisor Pine's question, when he asked about the recidivism rate and you said that you hadn't finished analyzing all the other counties, I suppose, I'm wondering if we could get that, those kind of measures for jobs, housing, as well as recidivism, to see really with the data how we compare to others.
Absolutely, we can work on that for our, our next report.
Thank you to the whole team. That was a quite remarkable report.
Great, thank you very much.
President, President Groom, I think technically the board needs to take, take action to accept the report.
All right, we've, motion to accept.
I'll move acceptance to the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, accepted. Item number six is a Measure A item, Mr. Maltby? Okay.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Byers. My name is Peggy Jensen, I'm Deputy County Manager. On August 4th, staff presented to your boards some recommendations on the final allocation of the remaining $1 million of Measure A money for affordable housing. At that meeting, your board requested some additional information on the PCRC, the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, program for mediating landlord-tenant disputes related, not related to rent. I'm here this morning to present that additional information and propose a revised allocation based upon that. PCRC provides community mediation services to all San Mateo County residents. These services are available for conflicts between neighbors, landlords and tenants, between families, consumers and businesses, work associates, and others in the community. PCRC contracts with 12 cities and the county to provide reduced-cost mediation services to the residents in those cities. In fiscal year 1415, PCRC opened 150 community mediation cases. Over 35% of those cases were neighbor disputes, and 22 of those cases related to landlord-tenant conflicts. Of the 22 cases, last fiscal year that were landlord-tenant conflicts, about 30% went to mediation. All the cases that were mediated reached some sort of agreement between the tenant and the landlord. In the other 16 landlord-tenant cases, the other parties, whoever did not request the mediation, declined to participate or could not be reached by PCRC. Given the low number of requests and the low number of cases that actually go toward mediation, what we're proposing to do is give $20,000 to PCRC, increase their current county contract to provide outreach throughout the county to publicize the availability of these landlord-tenant services. Our hope is that this will be part of the whole suite of services that the board is considering providing to everyone in the county to assist both landlord-tenant and affordable housing issues. We propose that we would report back in the spring to your board on the outcome of this outreach effort, and then if in fact it was successful, could come back and request additional funds to provide mediation support if needed. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to add that Michelle Vilches, who's Executive Director of PCRC, is here and available to answer questions, along with Addie Rose Mayer, who is the Director of the Community Mediation Program.
No questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Jensen. We have no questions, so.
I'll move approval of the, the allocation of $20,000 in Measure A funds to increase the county's con, contract with PCRC.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Mr. Maltby, County Managers Report.
I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Maltby? Okay. Do you want to do board reports now, or would you want, would you like to come back? We'll go to the study session, come back, let's do that. Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break and then begin the CCE study session. We're going to begin in just a second. Okay, before we begin our study session, we have a request from somebody who got caught in traffic to make a public comment statement, Jennifer Warburton.
I'm a San Mateo County resident, and I have been for 25 years. I am also disabled, and it took me a while to get my disability taken care of. But in the beginning of this year, my children, I have four children, and my fiance and I lost our home. During the time, I went through trying to find the resources with human services agencies through this county, as well as other counties, due to the fact that there was no help for me in this county. There were no vouchers. I even went to the sheriff's department. I contacted CPS on my own at the beginning of this year, asking for help after spending a month in a motel through help with friends and my own complete disability payments. After the month, I could no longer, you know, handle paying for, in the motel. But during the entire month that I was there, I spent every single day contacting county agencies, looking for help, looking for housing help, and anything, even outside this county, because it wasn't anything. After calling CPS, we had our rights violated through CPS and with the police department. When they came out, because I called them, looking for help, and they were going to put us in a motel. The police officer at the time said that he was going to go ahead and pay for it himself, because again, there were no vouchers to help me. The next thing I knew, he said, "Go ahead and get all the items, you know, for your children and for yourself, and I will help you." At that time, it took me about 15 more minutes, and the next thing I knew, I was being swarmed with five officers, asking for my fiance, who was inside the house where we used to live, because his brother, his disabled brother was still living in that home at the time. When they asked for us, they said, I went and got him, and they said they were taking my children away. They took two of my children, my youngest two, when I was the one that called asking for help. After that, we went to court, and they ended up taking my other two children. I right now have found where I have an appellate attorney, and it is being done, we found five, where five reasons where they have violated my constitutional rights, and were not, and have not been helping us. During this time, through the 10 months that they've had my children, my children have been abused in foster care. One of my children is still in the home where he has been physically assaulted, and as well, there was an investigation done. I spoke with the licensing agency, they went out and they did find that the abuse did happen. My children are still in these foster homes, and I'm coming to you for help.
All right, Ms. Warburton, I'm going to ask you if you could, we're going to have our county council and our county manager look into this. If we can, John, can you help with that, please?
Most certainly. I am not familiar with this particular situation, but we can have a conversation and see if we can sort it out.
All right. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Sorry that you had to come under these circumstances.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Egomire, welcome.
Good morning, Madam President, supervisors, Mr. Malpighi, and Mr. Byers. Thank you very much for your time this morning to discuss Community Choice Energy in San Mateo County. For today's presentation, we have assembled a number of slides and topics to share with you. This is a team approach, and the CCE team will all be participating today. Our presentation is focused around the following chapters. I will be briefly talking today about the purpose of today's meeting, giving a short overview of the Community Choice Energy, and our advisory committee meetings and outreach efforts. Following me will be the team from Pacific Energy Advisors, John Delessi, Kirby Dusell, and Brian Goldstein. Following PEA, Kathy Miola and David Silberman from county council's office will be giving an overview of the legal documents for the formation of a JPA. Following Kathy and David will be Sean Marshall from Lean Energy, where Sean will be discussing the Phase Two tasks, budget, and timeline. Sean and I will then wrap up with our next steps and seek your direction on how to proceed next. So, kind of in summary, what we're looking for today is your guidance and direction relative to the Community Choice Energy program in San Mateo County. Next, I'm going to give you kind of a quick overview of why Community Choice Energy in San Mateo County. So during our extensive outreach we've been doing for the past few months, a number of key points have surfaced that I want to share with you today, which includes that San Mateo County fosters a culture of innovation, environmental health, and clean technology. We've also become very aware of the Marin and Sonoma's Community Choice Energy programs and their success, and that we've had, the county and its cities have aggressive climate action goals, and that we're intrigued by the consumer and local economic benefits associated with Community Choice Energy. And our local advocacy groups have been supporting this effort. From our feedback from public and business community have also been very positive, and potentially a very good fit for San Mateo County and the cities within. So how does it work? Community Choice Energy is basically around the formation of this joint powers agreement, which we have called ourselves Peninsula Clean Energy, in which we will be purchasing electricity from renewable energy sources, and then in turn, working with PG&E, in conjunction with them, a partnership, which then will deliver the energy, they maintain the lines, and they also continue to do and bill the customers, thus the partnership for all of the customers associated with the formation of this JPA. So here's some basic program features. The biggest change you'll never notice, a typical slide we've been using frequently with all of our outreach efforts. So the basic features are the formation of a JPA. Local governments need to pass an ordinance and then enter into this JPA agreement. PG&E still continues the billing, the customer service, and the line maintenance. There's a new additional line added to PG&E's bill relative to an exit fee, and that we've also are required to provide four opt-out notices to the customers associated with the formation of this JPA, the group. And that, at any time, those customers can return to PG&E, therefore the choice for electricity and its source. And then the last item is that we are involved with the California Public Utilities Commission. CPUC certifies the CCE plan and oversees the relationship with PG&E. A number of months ago, at the beginning of this process with you, we shared with you a three-phase project, and we're now concluding, nearing the end of Phase One, which was really our pre-planning and due diligence phase, beginning back in January, which included our internal team, initial outreach to cities and key stakeholders, workshops and education, our technical study, and the formation of a CCE advisory committee. A little bit more details relative to those first nine months, in which we've had outreach to all 20 cities, we had unanimous participation in the technical study, we formed our internal staffing and consultant teams to manage the process, we had unanimous board agreement to fund this first phase from your board. We've had a number of engagements with community and stakeholders, which includes also our database, e-notifications, our website development, educational workshops for staff and the public, and a number of one-to-one briefings with city and event tabling. We've also initiated the advisory committee, which started meeting monthly in May. We've held five meetings, and as I mentioned too, we've named our program Peninsula Clean Energy, and we're very close to identifying a logo and the graphics to represent our efforts. Today, we'll be sharing with you the technical study, which is now complete. So relative to our Phase One and Two, and Sean Marshall will be explaining a little bit more detail about our Phase Two, but we will be continuing those efforts around informational briefings and workshops, community events, one-on-one meetings, and efforts towards our local press about our efforts, and also making our website more robust and emails to our database. So here's a summary of all of our outreach efforts. We've been to and had 18 city councils, community councils or government agency presentations, been involved with 10 chamber of commerce and business groups, and 12 community organizations, all around CCE efforts in San Mateo County. And what's coming up, the next two months, is a very robust effort relative to 19 additional presentations, community workshops, and we've already had and scheduled seven presentations to city councils. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and at this time, I'd like to now introduce John Delessi, Kirby Dusell, and Brian Goldstein from PEA, or Pacific Energy Advisors, who now will be talking about the technical study results.
Good morning, President Groom, supervisors, Mr. Malpighi, and Mr. Byers. As Jim mentioned, I'm Kirby Dusell with Pacific Energy Advisors, and we were retained by the county for purposes of completing a technical study focused on community choice aggregation here in San Mateo County. Did I work this right? All right, so with regard to the contents of today's presentation, we'll be walking through a number of items, kind of setting the table a bit with the discussion of the methodology that was employed for purposes of completing the study, talking a bit about how it is that your customers currently use energy, what that customer base looks like within San Mateo County, talking a bit about the setup for the study and the different scenarios that were explored as part of this exercise, as well as the results that flowed through the study itself, some conclusions that were drawn as a result of completing the study, and then of course, ample opportunity for questions and discussion. So in terms of the methodology, the work that we do primarily starts with a collection of historical data related to your customers and the manner in which they use energy. This data is provided by PG&E under an applicable tariff, so there's actually a formal mechanism by which communities like San Mateo County are able to request this information and receive it from PG&E. And we take that data, and that data becomes the basis for determining potential costs associated with operating and administering a community choice aggregation program such as this. Of course, that's going to flow through in terms of how it is that the cost will ultimately compare with the incumbent service provider, PG&E, and then also quite a lot of work that goes on in terms of assembling the supply portfolio on a prospective basis that your customers may choose to use. That flows through a pro forma analysis, which kicks out projected operating results under each one of the different scenarios that were studied as part of the effort here. We also completed an economic impact analysis using standardized industry models that are regularly used to calculate such impacts, models that are prepared by the federal government's National Renewable Energy Laboratory. And then ultimately, this data is compiled and presented in the form of a technical study report, which is now available. So in terms of how your customers use energy here in San Mateo County, this slide, and I apologize if it's tough to read, but hopefully you've got something in front of you that you can point to, kind of gives an overview of what your customers look like in aggregate here in San Mateo County. You've got about 300,000 customer accounts in aggregate, which use about 4.3 million megawatt-hours of electric energy each year. Most of those customers, in fact, almost 100% of them on a percentage basis, are served under bundled service arrangements with PG&E. So these are customers that receive both the electric commodity as well as the delivery services from PG&E. That's kind of the top line there, the PG&E bundled electric accounts. You do have a small portion of your customers that are served under direct access service arrangements, and these are specific contracts, direct contracts if you will, between individual customers and third-party energy services providers. So these customers, there was legislation that essentially opened up this opportunity a while ago in the state of California, and certain customers, usually larger customers, took advantage of this opportunity. You've got about 554 of those accounts within the county right now, but you'll see, despite the relatively small proportion of accounts that are represented by direct access customers, they use almost 10% of the energy. So again, on an average basis, very large energy users, which is quite typical. And I think it's noteworthy that throughout the state, there is a participatory cap on these sorts of service arrangements that's roughly 10% of all of the energy used in California, and so you're tracking pretty much consistent with that percentage in terms of your customer composition. And then the bottom table there breaks out by typical tariff designations, so as you can imagine, you're likely familiar with the concept, that there's a group of customers, the majority of yours in fact, that are, that take service under a variety of residential tariffs, and then of course, there's a variety of commercial tariffs, small, medium, and large, industrial, so on and so forth. So this is really the breakout of how those distinct customer groups look within San Mateo County, and as you can see, despite the fact that 90% of your total customer base is represented by that residential class, they use only 37% of the electric power. And then of course, the balance of the customers on a proportionate basis within San Mateo County, so just under 10%, use over 60% of the electric power, which again, you know, just speaks to the fact that you do have some relatively large energy users here. This slide here just kind of takes the previous information and displays it visually, and maybe that's helpful for some of you, some in the room as well, to just kind of better understand the orders of magnitude that we're talking about here in terms of the way that your customers are composed here in San Mateo. And I think, you know, this is also an interesting slide, it's this horizontal bar chart that shows on the left hand, the proportion of energy that's consumed by each one of the communities, each one of the jurisdictions within San Mateo County. So that's the left bar chart, and then the right bar chart is the proportion of customers that are represented by each one of those jurisdictions. And you can see that there's kind of generally some parity, but you know, you can see some instances where, for example, not to, you know, pick on anybody here in particular, but Daly City, for example, represents about 7% of the total customers within San Mateo County are within Daly City, sorry, 7% of the total electricity consumption occurs within Daly City, yet they have 11% of the total accounts. So you know, on an average basis, a little bit lower than average in terms of the electricity usage, so it's another bit of information there. Okay, so moving on, I guess, to what we would characterize as the meat and potatoes of the study, and more specifically, the different scenarios that were analyzed through that exercise. I think it's worth noting that there were a number of discussions that went on. Supervisor Pine was actively involved in this, as well as President Groom, Jim Egomire as well, and various other representatives from the county were actively involved in discussions with Pacific Energy Advisors to frame how it is that these different scenarios might look, because I think it was really important to cast a pretty broad net in terms of developing your understanding of what was possible under community choice aggregation, kind of establishing the bookends, if you will, and then also trying to figure out maybe a happy medium in the middle that worked through the balancing act that comes with figuring out what cost impacts will be as a trade-off for increased amounts of clean energy. And you can see here, this, you know, little fulcrum and the pitching exercise that goes on, on either side of it, typically, to the extent you fold in additional renewable energy supply and other clean energy supplies, as well as complementary energy programs that would promote the development and installation of local distributed renewable generation sources like rooftop solar, or other kind of slightly larger, small utility-scale sources through feed-in tariff programs. These typically come as a cost, and of course, that will impose upward pressure on rates, will also impose some administrative complexity in terms of designing the tariffs that will support the administration of those programs, and then of course, the staff that are needed to administer those items as well. So engineering that trade-off was really front and center in our early discussions, focused on the technical study. And through that exercise, we also wanted to consider, okay, well, what's kind of the comparative benchmark, if you will? comparative benchmark, if you will, that we ought to consider as part of this exercise? And that's, of course, the current supply portfolio of the incumbent utility PG&E, which I think it's noteworthy that it's quite clean on a comparative basis, generally kind of above the required renewable percentage, 27% of PG&E's supply portfolio was comprised of renewable resources in the 2014 calendar year. An additional 8% was sourced from other GHG-free resources like large hydroelectric power, and then, of course, 21% of PG&E's supply portfolio, rather large proportion, is represented by nuclear supply. And then you can see in the right column, kind of the California aggregate power mix and how that compares with PG&E. So keeping these numbers in mind was pretty important when we framed the different supply scenarios that were studied as part of this effort. And I think it's also noteworthy that we had some policy-related considerations that were taken into account, like the state's renewables portfolio standard, which was previously 33% by 2020. Now it's increased to 50% by 2030, so we were attentive of those considerations in framing these different scenarios. And you can see here the way that those scenarios were ultimately framed. So three of them in total. Scenarios one and scenario, scenarios one and three can really be aptly characterized as the benchmark or the bookends for what it is that was studied here. The scenario one being more focused on cost competitiveness and how can a portfolio be assembled in such a way that there are definitely clean energy elements that are attentive to various state regulations, but also how can we drive down costs to the lowest possible level for purposes of really saving your customers' money? And then scenario three was the other bookend, and that's how do we maximize environmental benefits, not just renewable energy procurement, but also related GHG emissions reductions that could flow through this program, and what would that look like in terms of the cost impacts to customers? Scenario two, of course, was really a midpoint, trying to balance the scales a bit, looking at advancing clean energy delivery considerably within San Mateo County at a cost that was still quite affordable relative to rates that customers otherwise pay. And I think in doing all that, that these top two bullets were also important to consider. We received specific direction to exclude the use or inclusion of unbundled renewable energy certificates or unbundled RECs, as they're called, from any of the planning scenarios, so these were not considered at all. These are relatively low-cost renewable energy options that are available in the marketplace, but recently, there's been some fairly heated philosophical debate on the environmental benefits of these sorts of instruments, and so they were kind of set aside for planning purposes in the technical study. And then we also excluded the use of nuclear and coal resources, which also kind of come with their own philosophical objections. And of course, coal is, even though it was excluded, it's for practical purposes, it's not necessarily all that available due to some emissions performance standards that exist within the state of California and limitations on emissions related to power supply. So these were, those were the supply scenarios, and again, small text here, I apologize for that, but this is kind of a very high-level summary of the different outcomes that resulted under each one of the scenarios. And here, we're just focusing on year one for the sake of brevity. And you can see under scenario one, again, not particularly aggressive when it came to bringing on clean energy supply. So this would be a kind of a legally compliant supply portfolio, but not a lot of extra renewable energy above and beyond that. That resulted in an average 6% savings for San Mateo customers. And when you're like wondering what does that translate into in terms of a residential customer, it's about a $5.40 a month savings relative to what the customer is currently paying. This second to the last line, I think, is also important to consider. One of the items that is kind of unique to community choice aggregation as opposed to, say, the investor-owned utility service model or publicly-owned utility service models is that this is an opt-out program, so customers are automatically enrolled unless they make a decision to remove themselves from participation. And we've developed quite a body of statistics via our participation and support that we provide for California's other operating community choice aggregation programs in Marin, previously in Sonoma, and then also in Lancaster, City of Lancaster down in Southern California. And so this 85% participation rate draws from that kind of work that we've done elsewhere, and seems like, you know, an appropriate assumption here. And of course, as you'd reasonably expect, under scenario one, due to the fact that PG&E does have quite a large share of its supply portfolio sourced from nuclear resources, which are deemed GHG-free for purposes of emissions reporting, and then also quite a bit of hydroelectric power as well, this scenario doesn't compare particularly well on an environmental basis. So there would be additional emissions introduced into the, into the power sector as a result of kind of the scenario one situation. Moving to the right, under scenario two, we're talking about bringing online a lot more renewable energy and then supplementing that renewable energy with additional clean energy sources in the form of large hydroelectric power produced and delivered from the Western United States. Under this scenario, slightly lower savings, but still pretty compelling, 4% average for all San Mateo customers, and that translates into just over $4 a month for a residential customer in terms of the expected savings. Again, an 85% participation rate was assumed here, and here, we also observed some nice environmental benefits in the form of reduced emissions. So you can see about 75,000 metric tons of reduced GHG emissions in year one of operations. And then scenario three, kind of, I guess, you could characterize this as the gold standard in terms of the environmental benefits, would really exclusively rely on renewable energy for purposes of serving your electric customers. As you can imagine, renewable energy is comparatively more expensive these days, so there were some cost increases that would be passed through to customers under this scenario, about 2% above what they're currently used to paying, and that translates into just under $2 a month for a residential customer for that 100% renewable energy supply. We did adjust our participatory assumptions slightly under scenario three due to the fact that there would be increased costs. We assume that additional customers would make the elective decision to opt themselves out, and you can see how that was broken up, about 75% of customers in the residential and small commercial class were assumed to participate, but the larger customers, the medium and large commercial customers that are a bit more cost-sensitive, we assume that half of those accounts would opt out. Pretty significant environmental benefits under scenario three, as you'd reasonably expect, in excess of 200,000 metric tons of GHG emissions reductions in year one. So in terms of the finances here, I, you know, not to get too fixated on going number by number, but you can see that the top line lays out the expected number of accounts that would be participating under each one of the different scenarios. And again, if you relate that to the previous slide, the participatory assumptions under scenarios one and two are the same, so we have the same number of customers in both of those scenarios here, and then, of course, under scenario three, reduced participatory assumptions, and that's reflected in the table. Of course, that also flows through the annual energy sales that are assumed. The costs, of course, flow through related not just to the volumes of energy that are being procured, but also to the types of those energy sources that are being purchased. So as the content of renewable energy and clean energy generally increases, costs also increase on a volumetric basis, and that's reflected here in the performance projections. And then reserves, I think it's noteworthy that in all of the scenarios, reserves were explicitly carved out. So these were, these are budgeted reserves that kind of come off the top almost, if you will, even though, I guess, really kind of technically doesn't work that way, but these were planned reserves that aren't paid for by the potential savings that are generated. So those are baked into the numbers. And then, jumping down to the bottom line, you can see that where there is a kind of a negative parenthetical there, that represents the potential for customer savings. So in the case of scenario one, that $40 million in savings is directly related to the 6% cost reduction that was reflected on the previous slide, and it's really up to the governing board of the Community Choice Aggregation Program to determine whether or not that 40 million is allocated to reducing customer rates or to funding complementary energy programs that might also be available to the CCA. So you've got some choices to make with the disposition of those funds, and then, of course, you know, to the extent that there are additional charges that the customers would incur, as is the case with scenario three, those would have to be collected in the form of increased rates, and that was also reflected in the previous slide. So in terms of the environmental impacts, you can kind of see a 10-year average here of how the numbers shake out with regard to greenhouse gas emissions, kind of the proportionate changes that result under each one of the scenarios, and these are all driven by the expected emissions intensity of the Peninsula Clean Energy Supply portfolio relative to the emissions intensity that's projected for the PG&E supply portfolio. And the difference between those numbers kind of drives the overall impact that you observe here on this chart. So we've done this a number of times now, and risks and uncertainties are very front and center in the discussion, and I think, you know, it's important that, you know, you go into this open-eyed and that you realize that the electric power markets have been historically volatile, and they're subject to kind of sudden and significant changes in terms of pricing, but, you know, a lot of that risk can be laid off and protected against through prudent planning and contracting practices. So I think, you know, maybe the concern is there are risks and uncertainties. I think the good news is that a lot of those can be addressed through planning exercises. And this just kind of lays out what those risks are here. Obviously, the comparison to PG&E's electric rates is very much relevant to the discussion here, and those rates change periodically, and it's tough to know at any given point in time what those rates will actually look like one year, two years, 10 years down the road. So the projections that we put together as part of the technical study relied on best available information in terms of that PG&E, that rate forecast, and playing that out over a 10-year period and how it is that that compared with the projected CCA operations. Another item that's come up is, you know, with the increased California Renewables Portfolio Standard to 50% and aspiring CCA initiatives existing throughout the state that are increasingly concerned with procuring additional quantities of renewable energy in excess of the RPS standard, what does that mean in terms of the availability of these resources? Am I actually going to be able to get what I need or want to serve my customers? And I think that the market has demonstrated so far that there are a great deal of renewable energy projects that are in the pipeline, and that's really not a particularly real concern in terms of whether or not renewable energy supply will ultimately be available. I do think, however, that large hydroelectric resources, which have been used by CCAs and other load-serving entities throughout the state to supplement the renewable energy purchases with additional GHG-free supply, the availability of those resources, you know, is a concern. Obviously, we're in a prolonged drought situation. You know, there are kind of regional impacts where that drought, the effects of that drought are amplified in certain areas more so than in others, and because the electric grid is interconnected throughout the Western United States, there are often alternative supplies that can be accessed when drought conditions are prevalent locally. But, you know, I think that is something to be aware of, certainly, and to kind of have alternatives in mind with regard to what other types of products you might choose to pursue, and of course, what the cost impacts are likely to be over time. And, you know, the, some of the other items are more participatory in nature, just in terms of the overall opt-out percentage and whether or not the assumption that was reflected in the technical study turns out to be accurate. As you can imagine, whether that number is higher or lower, it could impose some impacts on the aggregation program. If it's lower than expected, you have to go out and buy more energy than you originally anticipated, and if it's higher than expected, of course, you might have some additional supply that you have to sell back into the marketplace, and we looked at that as part of the sensitivity analyses that we carried out. And then, how is it that you're going to go about providing credit support for any of the power purchase agreements that are ultimately required in order to source your customers' energy requirements? Who's going to be providing the credit support? If it's a new entity such as the Joint Powers Agency that has yet to be formed, and there's going to be kind of some protections that exist for each one of the participating municipalities, how is, you know, how are suppliers going to deal with that? What sort of structural elements can be considered in order to compose a viable power purchase agreement? And then, of course, there's a number of, you know, regulatory issues that always seem to be in play, and monitoring those issues over time and making adjustments is necessary, whether that's related to your procurement or programs that you're administering, any other considerations for that matter. And so this here really kind of highlights the range of possibilities relative to the base case that we looked at as part of the technical study. You can see kind of the arrows, the upward arrows, in each one of the vertical lines. Those arrows represent the base case, and then the, kind of the line extending above and below, that arrow represents the range of possibilities in consideration of these different sensitivity tests that were imposed on the left-hand side. So, you know, we looked at impacts to natural gas prices, which directly influence electric power prices, renewable energy prices, carbon-free energy prices, specifically large hydroelectric power, PG&E generation rates, and then also exit fees. We haven't talked a lot about exit fees, but as a customer participating in a CCA program, there are some surcharges that PG&E imposes in consideration of their kind of above-market power costs. So the idea being that the remaining customers in PG&E's portfolio are really held indifferent to whether or not customers leave for CCA programs or direct access programs or any other alternative. And so these are surcharges that we considered as part of the technical study. So those savings numbers that you saw several slides back, those included the impacts of these surcharges, so that there's no, nothing hidden in that regard. And then also opt-out rates as well, some sensitivities around that. And you can see that really, under any of these sensitivity analyses, there's kind of a very clear and compelling competitive basis with regard to the rates for the Peninsula Clean Energy Program. So what does all this mean? I think the short story is that the technical study demonstrated that based on current market conditions, that Peninsula Clean Energy would be viable under a broad range of planning scenarios and operating considerations. Scenario one in particular really highlighted the viability of Peninsula Clean Energy on a rate-competitive basis. Scenario two highlighted the viability of Peninsula Clean Energy not just on a rate-competitive basis, but also on a clean energy basis as well. So infusing additional renewables and other GHG-free power supplies into the San Mateo community while still retaining a high level of rate competitiveness. And then, of course, scenario three highlighted the financial impacts that would accrue to Peninsula Clean Energy customers under a 100% renewable scenario. And at the end of the day, there's really no right answer here. You know, these are just indicative supply scenarios that were studied for purposes of pulling all this information together and giving your board, as well as the governing councils of the participating jurisdictions, an idea of what's possible here. At the end of the day, you can decide on whatever mix makes the most sense to you, so there's certainly fine tuning that can be done here before you come up with the product that's ultimately offered to your customers. And that's all I've got. And that's all I've got.
I had a couple of questions. The exit fee, or opt-out rate, would you expect that that would be like a one-time fee, or would that be an ongoing fee?
Yeah, so the exit fees are, it's a volumetric surcharge. So every month, the Peninsula Clean Energy customers would be assessed this charge based on the volume of energy that they use. And that amount will actually change on an annual basis. There's kind of this benchmarking exercise where you look at what conditions exist in the marketplace relative to the costs that were incurred by PG&E in procuring their power supplies, and you compare the two. And that results in the derivation of this exit fee that's then assessed to customers. And the idea is that, over time, as those contracts that were entered into on behalf of the customers that elected to receive Community Choice Aggregation service, as those contracts expire, that exit fee goes down.
A couple of other questions. PG&E has some kind of like a baseline for low-income people. Your scenarios would include that as well still?
Absolutely, yeah.
And scenarios one, two, and three, I assume that it doesn't mean that the individual customer doesn't choose. It would be, we would choose the scenario for the whole. So we would maybe, it would be three for everyone, or two for...
Yeah, that was the way that the study was framed. There have been discussions about whether or not there could be, you know, one of the scenarios could be offered in this jurisdiction, another scenario could be offered in a different jurisdiction. I think there are some really compelling reasons as to why that may not be a good idea, just in terms of the communication and administration. However, I will say that if you do decide to pick a supply scenario other than scenario three and use that as the default offering for program customers, you're always able, and matter of fact, the other operating Community Choice Aggregation programs have done this as well, offer a voluntary one-hundred percent renewable energy service option for customers. So you can still, in effect, offer two different product mixes to your customers. One would be the default, and the other would be available on a voluntary basis. And of course, the terms and conditions for that would be articulated.
One other question is, supposing if we did choose option three, do we actually have enough renewables to supply the whole county?
Yeah.
And I did know, in the analysis, it also talks about that there would be potentially our ability to invest in renewable projects. And it actually talks about, you know, it's a considerable amount of economic benefit and job creation. So are we assuming that they're really, it'll really jump-start a lot of renewable projects?
Yeah, so I try to hit all the parts of that there. So with regard to the availability of renewables, kind of starting there, I think it's important to note that it would only be a subset of the total renewables required under scenario three that would be developed and sourced from, you know, San Mateo-based generating resources. The balance of those resources would be located elsewhere within the state of California. So that's really kind of, those were the parameters that the study anticipated. So I think the indicative supply portfolio that was constructed for purpose of the technical study included about three-hundred-and-thirty megawatts of new renewable generation. And I think it was twenty of that, twenty megawatts, would be, is assumed to be developed locally. And so the basis for the jobs and economic development impacts estimates that were reflected in the study were kind of aggregated across the full breadth and scope of those new projects. So whether they were in, you know, to the extent they exist in San Mateo County, obviously a higher proportion of those jobs and economic development impacts would accrue locally. And then, to the extent that those projects exist elsewhere, then it would be, you know, more of a statewide benefit.
Just have one last question then. How does SolarCity fit in this? Because it's, you know, I guess it's a distributive system where people have, you know, rooftop solar.
Yeah.
I'm one of their customers, for example. How does, you know, they, so I buy my energy mostly from them, a little bit from PG&E. How does that, how would that work? Was this...
Yeah, you'd be totally unaffected. That relationship that you have with SolarCity, or really, you know, they're a very popular vendor, there's dozens of them, hundreds of them, besides SolarCity. And so to the extent that you have that relationship with SolarCity or any other vendor, you continue that relationship. And it's just that supplemental energy requirement that you're now buying from PG&E that you would be buying from the Peninsula Clean Energy Program instead.
Do they have excess energy that they would sell to, for example, us?
Yeah, so when you're asking about excess energy and selling it back to us, are you asking if SolarCity would do that?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting question, and that's not typically the business model that they employ. The way that that works is more on a customer-specific basis. So if you produce excess energy, you're currently selling that back to PG&E. But under the CCA construct, that excess energy would be sold back to Peninsula Clean Energy. And so the, to date, the operating CCAs have been very effective in putting together these, I guess, advantageous tariffs to basically deal with that very situation. So customers wind up being paid even a bit more than they're currently being paid for that excess supply. So it wouldn't be SolarCity that's selling back excess to the CCA, it would be you, in effect.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If I could just put a finer point on that, you know, there's some proposals by, you know, PG&E to increase the costs for people who have solar. And one thing that this model, the PC model, could do locally is not impose those costs and, as was mentioned, buy back your surplus energy. So it has been done in other counties because of the idea of, again, trying to get more rooftop solar deployed.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, County Manager and County Council. My colleague and I are now entering into the exciting portion of the presentation, the Joint Powers Agreements. So what is a JPA? A JPA is the mechanism for government agencies to come together to exercise joint powers. And that can refer, a JPA can refer to a joint powers agreement, or it can refer to a completely new entity, a joint powers agency.
So basically, it has a couple of benefits. The first is it allows the other jurisdictions in the county, the cities, to be full partners in the CCE. It also has the added benefit of limiting liability for the county and the other parties to what is actually in the JPA itself. And then finally, another benefit is it creates a separate entity that can actually be expert in the purchasing and running of the CCE.
What I thought was really interesting is that the beginning of the joint powers agreements and joint powers, exercise of joint powers, the concept itself actually came from the Bay Area. It came from the nineteen twenties when there was a TB health scare, and San Francisco, with their climate, was not able, and didn't have room in order to help people actually be treated with TB. But Alameda did have space, and they had a better climate. And so the Senator Johnson from San Mateo actually proposed some legislation to allow the governments to work together. And that was the very first exercise of joint powers that ever existed. And it was controversial at the time, but the California Supreme Court affirmed the exercise. And then eventually, it ended up being the Joint Powers Exercise, Joint Exercise of Powers Act that was passed much later.
So the formation of the JPA is taking place right now. There's a draft JPA agreement that is before the board, to the extent the board has any requested changes to it, we can make those. We've set up a meeting to meet with the various city attorneys, pushing it out to the cities. And basically, the most important thing about this slide is the schedule. The plan is to try and have the JPA agreement in place by the end of this winter. And the reason for that is we need to start, well, to take advantage of what we understand are the most advantageous rates, we need to be able to start purchasing power next
And so once the JPA agreement is agreed to, and we've indicated that there has to be at least three agencies that join the county to form the JPA, it would be filed with the Secretary of State's office, and then we can incur debts, exercise powers, sue or be sued, hire staff, and obtain financing and manage property.
So now we're kind of moving into some of the key portions of the points in the JPA agreement. From this slide, I just want to highlight, so the, there are some strict financial accountability requirements of any JPA agreement, there are some options within that. And one of the options that we're proposing is that the county treasurer serve as the treasurer of the JPA. That's not a requirement, but as you know, that's actually a standard in most of our JPA agreements.
And then, just so you understand the document framework, the JPA agreement would be the structure under which the entity is formed. And then there's also a CCA ordinance that needs to be passed by the county and all of the city agencies that want to join. And then there's also going to be board bylaws and policies that will actually dictate how the JPA is run, but the JPA agreement itself doesn't address, it just provides the structure for the entity to actually operate. And so, as David mentioned, there were a few issues, decision points, basically, that are part of the JPA, the structure and how it's going to be run. And the county staff have made recommendations in terms of how to proceed. These can be changed, but these are the recommendations that the county staff have made, and then also presented to the steering committees. And as far as we understand, from the comments that we received during the steering committee meetings, is that the cities are in agreement with the recommendation. But again, as David indicated, we've set up a meeting with the city staff and city council in terms of if they have any, in terms of they have any questions regarding the JPA. So the first is whether or not the agency itself would address other things besides just the CCA. And one of the recommendations we're making is that it would only address the CCA, as opposed to other programs. The other decision point is that cities would be full members. So each city that joins initially would have a representation on the Board of Directors. Board representation, as I just indicated, would be one seat per member, except for the county, which would have two seats. President Groom and Supervisor Pine have been integral in the process of starting this agency, and so they would have the two seats. We do want elected representatives to be the persons occupying those seats, with an alternate, of course, and then term limits to be determined based on the JPA Board of Directors. If they want to set term limits, they can make that decision. But we wouldn't specify that in the JPA agreement itself.
So when you look at these slides, when you see the section under precedent, you see the MCE and the SCP, that stands for Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma Clean Power. And so they each have JPAs set up already, and we use their JPA agreements as a starting point, and it kind of provides some context. So one of the things that's sort of unique with respect to this JPA agreement, that's unlike any of the other JPA agreements the county currently has, is this concept of weighted voting. So in addition to the normal voting, so we have, say we have twenty members of the JPA, two of the votes are held by the county, and the rest of the votes are held by the regular members. That's sort of the standard in the county, and it's a fifty percent vote in general that enacts something. In addition to that, this provides a second step for voting that is designed to protect both the smaller members of the JPA, as well as the bigger members of the JPA, and prevents one of those groups from jamming something down the other group. And so what it does is it basically looks at the number of power customers that the particular jurisdiction has as a proportion of the total number of power customers in the JPA, and that creates a weighted voting. So when you look back at some of the earlier slides and the earlier presentation, you saw that Redwood City and San Mateo and South San Francisco have a higher proportion of energy members in our community. With the weighted voting, they would have a little bit more power with respect to weighted voting than they would have with respect to the standard voting. It's a little bit confusing. If folks have questions, I'm happy to answer them. But it's best to think of it sort of as a Senate-House of Representatives situation, where in the Senate, every state has two votes, or in the House, every state has votes based on the population. It's designed as a check and balance, and these two voting systems work the same way.
And I would also point out that even though Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma Clean Power each have the weighted voting option, neither one has exercised, to date, a weighted voting vote.
The other decision point here was the, what we need to do is we need to provide sort of a framework for making decisions, whether we would use the county framework or some other framework, and the agreement currently provides for the county framework. So that's like with contracting, using county contracting principles, requests or proposals and the like.
The next decision points were basically new members post-launch. So that means not the members that join initially, but the members that want to join later on, which Marin did have a number, as well as Sonoma for that matter. And so what we're proposing is that there would be a modest fee, because there is an initial study that needs to be done to determine how much energy those entities might need, and whether or not we need to go out and buy more energy, and that may be costly because it may not be the right time. So basically, a modest fee to cover those types of costs. And then also, the option to remove earlier, either municipal accounts and/or all the accounts. So the option on that is, basically, if a city decides to exit the JPA, do they take their customers with them, or do the customers are able to stay and just, I'm sorry, and just remove the municipal accounts? So that's an option that the JPA can decide, and then also administer the self-administration just as MCE and SCP are at this point.
So another decision point was with respect to committees. When you look at both Marin and Sonoma, they use different models. One of them actually had some required committees. Specifically, they had a ratepayer committee and a business operations committee. The other had the committees be permissive. We selected, at least for now, the permissive route. And the rationale was that we understood from Sonoma's experience that having the set committees didn't provide it the flexibility necessary to make decisions. With respect to cost recovery, what the JPA provides is, it allows the, so the county is part of the system, is fronting some upfront costs. What the JPA agreement allows the county to do is to recover those upfront costs from revenues once the JPA is formed and running. It's actually one of the few areas where the JPA allows revenues to be taken. In general, they're provided for customer benefit only.
And again, it also specifies that the cities would not be, have to pay anything to join the JPA at the initial stage, except for the modest fee that indicated if they join later. And that's it, in terms of the legal documents. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, before you leave, would you mind stating your names for the record?
Sure, of course. Catherine Miola, I'm a chief deputy in the County Council's office, and my colleague is...
David Silverman, also a chief deputy.
Thank you.
She forgot my name.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Two quick things. The powers of the JPA that are listed in the document, are those normal for JPAs? Is that typical?
Yeah, absolutely. Those are the standard ones that are contained in the Joint Exercise of Powers Act.
And the second question is, there was a chart that you had that said there would be some elected members and some appointed, I think.
Well, so I think that one of the decision points was whether or not we would allow the members of the JPA to actually choose a non-elected member to serve in their stead. So, for example, the board could appoint, theoretically, could appoint someone other than a member of the board to serve on the JPA. And we, the current proposal does not allow that. It actually requires that any member, their representative, be an actual elected official for that tradition.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you both very much.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Sean Marshall. I'm from Lean Energy U.S. Thank you very much for your attention to all of this great detail on this topic. I know it's a lot to absorb at one time. So we're going to wrap up this part of the presentation with just some logistical information so you understand what we have planned here over the next six months, and then what we're looking at, hopefully, through to launch. So just in the big picture, Peninsula Clean Energy is... So, just in the big picture, Peninsula Clean Energy is targeting an August of 2016 program launch. I would say that, based on the way things have been going so far, if everything else continues to go the way it has been, we should be able to meet that targeted date for initial customer enrollment. So, what you have here before you is essentially highlighting Phase 2, which is the work that really commences today through the end of February. And the work over the next several months highlights, it really rests in a couple of kind of work within key buckets of, or categories. The first of which is really moving from the analytics of program feasibility into now program design and JPA formation, and all of the different moving parts that are required to get a new agency up and running. It is anticipated that the current county team will serve in an interim capacity until such time in Phase 3 that the JPA would then move forward to hire staff and transition into an independent agency. So there is a transition plan baked into all of this through Phases 2 and 3. The second sort of element is really focusing and continuing to focus on outreach to the cities in San Mateo County, making sure that they have the materials they need to make the decisions going forward, and also providing support through study sessions such as this one, working with them on their community outreach plans, their public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So, right now, we are in the process of getting all those study sessions scheduled to go back out, and that will be really happening, starting next week through January, with the idea that in January and February, the cities will then agendize the matter and bring it to their council for a full first and second reading to make a decision as to whether or not to participate in Phase 1 of the program. Should be noted that there's not an assumption that all cities in San Mateo County, all 19, will automatically join in this first round. It could be some subset of your cities that choose to go forward, and then there would be a second sort of enrollment period, if you will, sometime in the spring of 2017, where cities could then choose to enroll in a second phase. So it's not, there's not just one bite at the apple. There will be many opportunities. Having said that, we are encouraging cities to look at it closely in this first phase. Why? Because there's no cost to the local governments to do this, since the county has sponsored all of the startup funding to date. In addition, those cities that join in the first round do have an opportunity to be seated on the board and to really structure what the program looks like, in terms of not only agency policies, but also what the CCE program design will be going forward. So there is some incentive, we think, to joining coming up this winter and spring. The third element that really begins to ramp up in Phase 2, and then it's a real highlight in Phase 3, is community outreach and engagement. To date, the outreach has really been focused on public workshops, targeted stakeholder engagement, one-on-one briefings with some of the large energy users in the counties, and then, of course, all of the cities. In Phase 2 and Phase 3, that really shifts dramatically to public education. And so, there's a full advertising campaign that will be proposed, full public relations that could include social media, television, print advertising, more interface with the press, because the goal here is to make sure that nobody is surprised when customers are enrolled, assuming that you choose to move forward when customers are enrolled next summer. And then last, there is a whole body of work that happens on the technical side, the technical and legal side, specifically preparation of the implementation plan. That's the document we've referenced previously that goes to the CPC for certification of the program. RFPs for energy services, as well as other vendor services, will be developed. And then, toward the end of Phase 2, the technical team will begin to work on the utility service agreement, which basically oversees the relationship between Peninsula Clean Energy and the utility going forward. So that's kind of a summary level of the activities that take place here over the next six months, with lots of other detail that I'll leave out, with the idea, as I say, that it rolls right into Phase 3, starting in March, and that's where we're really then executing on contracts, getting the financing, terms and conditions finalized, and the program and staff up and running. The last thing I will mention here, and this slide, is that if we continue to move at the pace we're moving, it is likely that the JPA board will be seated in March of 2016, April, I would think, at the latest. But right now, we're targeting the first board meeting of that JPA to be March. That means that the advisory committee that currently exists will shift, will morph, if you will, into the board. Advisory committee members, of course, will always be invited to attend these board meetings, but it will shift from being advisory to Board of Directors. This is just an overview of the formation budget. You have seen this also back in February, when we came to you with the full program. In Phase 2, you can see that the allocation there, that really, there's a much greater emphasis, budget emphasis, on community engagement and public marketing, as well as a bump up in technical services for all of the RFPs and negotiations that happen. I will say that this is a relatively conservative estimate. As Jim can attest, we've done well in Phase 1 on the budgeting and anticipating coming in under budget in Phase 1. However, the county is asking for the full allocation in Phase 2, so that we have enough room if we want to do more with community outreach or their unforeseen circumstances. Jim, I think you'll back me up on this, but basically, I think, once Jim and his staff have closed out the budget for Phases 1 and 2, and we know with certainty where we land, when we come back to you in February of 2016, the budget request may be modified for Phase 3, depending on how we do with these numbers. So that's the quick review on the budget. Happy to take any questions on that, but I'll just wrap with my final slide, which is just to point out the next steps, which essentially match the outline that I gave you for our steps, with just a couple of nuances here that I'll point out. The first is that staff is working on a package of materials that will go out to all cities that includes many of the materials you've already gotten. The county council's office is hosting a feedback session with the city attorneys on October 14th to get their feedback on the terms of the JPA agreement and CCA ordinance. I imagine that if there are any amendments that come from that, that'll come back to your board for review as well. So there's a whole package that will basically be, you know, given to the cities by early November in preparation for their decision-making in the first quarter of 2016. It is proposed that we will come back to you for the county to take the first step forward in passing the CCE ordinance and authorizing the JPA agreement, maybe as early as October 20th, but Jim will cover that. We're working very closely with the cities to make sure that they partner with us on community outreach and engagement. We're not going to reinvent the wheel. They have many distribution channels in place to help us get that information out to their constituents. And then, I've already covered the community and technical pieces. I would just also say that county staff has been starting on the path of beginning to meet with local banking institutions to test their interest and, you know, possibly enter into a banking relationship by the end of Phase 2, as we roll into Phase 3, to know who your banker's going to be for your JPA. So I will stop there, and I think Jim will wrap it up.
Questions for Ms. Marshall? Okay. Mr. Egomire?
Thank you, Sean.
Before you, I do have a couple of public comment cards, so if you want to, we'll take those after you wrap up.
Yeah, that sounds great. Okay. So, in closing, I just wanted to, this is our kind of working document that we have internally about some key dates that we'll be addressing with, here in the real near future, with a couple of community workshops tomorrow, one up north, and then also another one here, Redwood City, with communities. And then, we're looking to see about your direction, and so we've been planning towards a return to your board on October 20th. Additionally, meeting with our advisory committee in October and November, and then also during the, it's really starting here in October, all the way through February, working with cities on their study sessions, similar to what we've presented today. So, to tell you the truth, in closing, I just want to thank you very much for your time and consideration for the Community Choice Energy Program in San Mateo County. And I would, before I finish, I would really like to acknowledge and personally thank our consulting teams, Sean Marshall and Seth Baruch from Lean Energy, and John DeLucy, and Kirby Dussel, and Brian Goldstein from PEA. And in addition, I'd like to also thank David Berudo from Supervisor Pine's office, and Ricky Bach from Supervisor Groom's office, and Kathy Miola, David Silverman, County Council, and last, from the Office of Sustainability, Gordon Tong and Kirsten Pringle. It's just been an incredible team, and I just want to say thank you very much to all of them, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Jim. We have a couple of speaker cards, and then we'll do it. Catherine McGarry, I think she left. Is Catherine McGarry still here? Okay. Landis Martia.
President Groom, Supervisors, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I want to thank you and commend you for excluding unbundled renewable energy certificates from any of the three scenarios. That's a huge thing for my organization, and I think for participants and citizens, it's a lot easier to understand this program without trying to get a handle on unbundled renewable energy certificates. Secondly, speaking on behalf as an executive board member of the San Mateo Labor Council, you've seen a number of, or at least two, proposals, resolutions regarding prevailing great jobs and appropriate area standards for jobs that occur in San Mateo associated with the PCE. We would still urge you to give those great weight. And number three, which is kind of tied to the first two, IBW 1245 supports the third proposal, which is 100% green. We believe that that will actually be a shrewd move in terms of the market. Our view is that the renewable energy costs are going to go up over time, and the sooner you can define and ascertain agreements, you may run a long way without having to suffer any of those spike in costs. My guess is the renewable portfolio standard will move from 50% to 75% rather quickly, and so we support the third option. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Please.
Jeff Alfes wants to speak.
Sure.
For Portola Valley.
Sure, please.
All right. We're listening online.
Don't worry.
Yeah, Jeff Alfes. I'm a council member with Portola Valley, currently the mayor, and I have represented Portola Valley to all of the CCA advisory committee meetings this year. I think Carol and Dave might attest that I've been an active participant, at times perhaps a skeptical participant, but Portola Valley looks forward to doing its part as far as moving forward with this, once you've done your part. And, you know, speaking as a private citizen, just, I'm very enthusiastic about this. You know, we've talked a lot today about a lot of complicated moving parts that have to be sorted out, but to me, that's actually one of the benefits of this. These are conversations that we should be having in terms of, you know, setting a leadership standard for our residents for as far as hashing out things like renewables, you know, rooftop distributed generation. I think these are, you know, they're complicated questions. You know, I think some of the answers as far as, you know, what, which of those alternatives we go with, how much renewables we pull for, I think are things that will come out of those conversations, and that's, to my mind, a good thing. I think the goal should be to reduce our carbon footprint, and it should be to do that in ways that by, including by building new renewable capacity. And I think we should be looking towards the best possible way to achieve that goal. And again, I think a lot of the true answers will come out of the discussions that happen over the next probably six months or so. I hope that you will be ready to move forward with this, because I know a lot of people in the county will be as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? We probably didn't announce at the beginning to fill out cards. Okay, don't see anybody. Comments? Supervisor Horsley?
The other thing I'd say is that, you know, I think climate change really is the challenge of our lifetime, and I was really impressed with your consultants, and I really congratulate both Supervisor Groom and Supervisor Pine. Really a very thoughtful process, and it's, I think this is going to be a great project, and it's a great thing for us to bring to the county.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Yeah, I would compliment the consulting team, too. I actually read the report and thought it was well-done, so thank you for all the graphics and the big printing. Appreciate that. Also, I just want to give a special shout-out to Jim Egomire and his staff in the Office of Sustainability, because I think you all have done a really an amazing job. And of course, County Council, as always, has done a fairly good job, David. And a special thank you to President Groom and Supervisor Pine for their leadership on this. I'm just amazed at how much work and how much progress has been made on this, so thank you to both of you for your leadership. It's appreciated and recognized. Thank you.
Supervisor Pine, who is really the leader. He has started, he brought this to the county's attention and has been the real leader and the real force behind this.
My colleague Supervisor Groom has been a fantastic partner, and it's really, this is a two-man job. But I would say that I'm incredibly pleased with the progress we've made. I mean, we actually did, as you'll recall, first talk about this in December of '14. So it's been a long journey, and when we started it, you know, it looked like a daunting one, but so far, it has moved very, very smoothly. The team, as has been pointed out, has just been first-class, our internal team, our external team. We meet weekly, you know, we find out what the issue of the week is, and we surmount it. I'd also like to point out that the city and stakeholder participation has just been tremendous. You know, our advisory committee is roughly 35 formal participants, and typically, most of them are there for each and every advisory committee meeting, and then there's been a fairly sizable public audience that also participates. And in our discussions with the cities, we've just gotten a tremendous, tremendous degree of enthusiasm. So, this is really starting to become very real. You know, today's an important step to, you know, look at, you know, really, this is the first board that's kind of seeing the formal, the formal shape of what to come. So, in summary, I mean, this program, I was always drawn to this program because of our obligation to reduce carbon emissions. It will provide cleaner energy at competitive prices. It will lead to the development of new renewable energy, both throughout the state and some locally. And also, what often isn't highlighted is that it can also result in the development of related sustainability programs, such as purchasing excess solar, putting in place energy efficiency upgrade programs, potentially installing electric vehicle charging stations. And what envelopes all of this, of course, is local control. So, you know, our county, you know, has a strong record of collaboration, has a strong record of innovation. So when you're going to take our attributes and give us the responsibility for procuring energy and looking for ways to reduce our carbon footprint, I think that's a, I think that's a great combination. And also, our citizens will have tremendous transparency into the process, since everything will be public and local. You know, PG&E has done much better in getting information out to citizens, but, you know, by definition, it's tougher for them to have that kind of level of local participation and local transparency. So, it's very exciting. It's been a great journey so far.
Yeah, and I want to just add to this Office of Sustainability, for the new guys in town, you certainly have done a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. And to our consultants, the energy and the information and the wisdom that you have brought to us has just made this so much easier to make these decisions. And just to, Dave said it, everything that needed to be said, but this is the right thing to do in this era of climate change, and it is local control, which we think is always the best way to do government. the best way to do government. So thank you all for being here, and thank you to the members of the audience for staying and listening to everything that we had to offer today. Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to see about, in closing, I see that there's really two alternatives. The first alternative would be, if there's any additional information that you need from our office or our consultants, would be to let us know and direct us to do that and return with that information. And then on the flip side, would be to ask for staff to proceed with the necessary documents for the formation of the JPA, which would be basically two phases. The first phase is really a first reading on the ordinance, and then the second meeting after that would be kind of the second reading and adoption of the resolution forming the JPA. And then the second part would be to that is an ATR to transfer monies from some source into the Office of Sustainability for phase two.
Are you prepared to hear this on October the 20th? Okay. So we will, we will bring everything back, or whatever is necessary, on October the 20th. And with that, thank you again.
Great job. [applause]
Okay.
As soon as they all leave. Okay, well, I'll just go ahead even though they're still talking. One of the things that kind of brings to mind is that we had this recent tragedy, that shooting in Oregon.
Yes.
And directly after there was the shooting, that was in Sandy Hook in Connecticut, Supervisor Tessier and myself started what was called a Coalition for Safe Schools and Communities. And one of the things that, through Supervisor Tessier's office and mine, we have been sending out this information for all county employees about this project that we actually started was called the Big Five. And we want to remind everybody that in San Mateo County, there nearly, now that it's October and kids are back in school, there's just roughly about 94,000 San Mateo County students that are really back in school. And the Big Five is really a school emergency plan with five key responses to any possible emergency. One is a, first is a shelter in place in response to an environmental hazard like smoke in the air or wildlife on campus. The other is a drop, cover, and hole, and that's on the immediate response to an earthquake or an explosion. Secure campus is the response to a potential threat of danger in the surrounding community. Lockdown and barricade is a response to an immediate threat of violence on campus. And evacuation is the response, wanting to be safe to be outside of the building or school grounds, rather, safer there rather than being inside the school. So it's really important that, you know, our parents, teachers, staff work together with public officials to ensure that children are safe at schools and that the staff has the training. So to learn more about the Big Five, actually, you can contact the county's Office of Education, and the phone number is 650-802-5588. I do want to say also that this was another one of those projects that were, before there were silos of information, schools, authorities had a certain amount of information, mental health, police, probation, and no one really was able to share through that information because of various legal requirements on confidentiality. And one of the things that the Big Five and the project did is that we figured out a way of being able to share information. We had a lot of support from the county council's office, and so there really is an agreement between all those agencies to be able to share information whenever there is a crisis or a kid or a teen is about to have some kind of a crisis or in need of some specific services. And so some of the things that this board has done, we now have a psychiatric emergency response team with the sheriff, where we have a specially-trained deputy sheriff, teamed with a clinician, expanded our CIT training in the SO as well as all law enforcement. Obviously, we all know that we've recently enacted Laura's Law. We have the early intervention for teens who have their first episode, either bipolar or schizophrenia. Again, the idea of being able to, you know, identify those teens who need those kinds of services, get them and their family into services. We have First Aid for Mental Health, we have the Respite Center, and of course, this Big Five. I think that when we look at shootings like in Oregon, that when people talk about one of the things that agencies can do, and that's really mental health, this board really has done it. We have really spent a significant, really significant amount of money with a number of really innovative projects that really address the mental health issues. Now, if we can get others to somehow address gun control, we will have done our job. But at least in this portion of it, in terms of mental health services, this board, I think, has really stepped up, and so I really want to thank all my, both Supervisor Tessier that I've worked with, as well as my colleagues on the board. We really have stepped up this year in mental health services. And I have one adjourned memory, and this is Eleanor Ellie Hess. She grew up in Montana, and she was called a "bomba kid" because it was habit of bringing a little cup of milk down to the barn to get fresh milk directly from cows. She climbed rocks and hiked the hills. She ended up working for Pan American Airlines as what was then called a stewardess, and she met the love of her life, Robert Hess. They, after they did a lot of traveling around the world, they settled in San Carlos. She was a campfire girl leader and a Boy Scout leader. She became an early member of the Loma Prieta chapter of the Sierra Club. She was on the San Mateo County Trails Committee and helped the movement that actually saved what became Edgewood County Preserve in Redwood City. She spearheaded the efforts really in Edgewood Park to become what was called a weed warrior to eradicate the invasive non-native plants that had infiltrated the park. And she earned a, actually, there's a meadow that's named after her in Edgewood Park because of the work that she has done. She was, in any case, she was not only a wonderful mother, sister, loving and caring grandmother, and there was nothing quite as comforting as spending the night at grandma's house and having homemade waffles for breakfast and exploring museums, beaches, and having her attend a sporting event or concert for her grandchildren.
Supervisor Pine?
I had two announcements, just with regard to the ongoing sea-level-rise work. As you know, we have a vulnerability of study that's underway, and one element of that is to pull together policymakers in the county, just to check in with them about the work we're doing and get their input and find out what they may need. So we're convening that group on Wednesday morning, that's tomorrow. And, you know, also, another regional initiative I'm involved in, and, you know, perhaps this might make sense for a brief presentation at a future meeting, is the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. And there's a lot of momentum now towards going to the ballot in June 2016 with a nine-county parcel tax to raise money for Title Wetland Restoration. So again, thought just entered my mind, Supervisor President Groom, that maybe a 10- or 15-minute presentation would be helpful for the board.
Excellent idea. Supervisor Slocum?
Just one quick thing, I wanted to wish a very happy birthday to Supervisor Don Horsley, and if you all join me in singing, no, just kidding, but happy birthday.
Okay, I have a bunch today. First, I'm going to do something for Supervisor Tessier. She asked me to adjourn our memory in Cyril, in honor of Cyril Bolgoff, who was a longtime leader in this county. He was a charter member on several county regional commissions, life member and past president of the Lions Club, charter and board member of the Brisbane Eagles. Moved in 1958, he moved to Brisbane and joined the volunteer fire department, and in October of '63, he became a full-time firefighter with the Brisbane Fire Department. He served 16 years on the Brisbane City Council, four of those were as mayor. He became, being the 50th mayor on the 50th anniversary of the city of Brisbane. When he retired from public service, he became a member on the grand jury and a member of the Brisbane Planning Commission. So he will be missed by his wife and his children and his grandchildren, and really much missed by the city of Brisbane. And then I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Don Edwards, who was a longtime congressman to the south of us. He served 32 years in the United States Congress and has miles of accomplishments, but he was a champion for civil rights, he was champion for environmental rights, he traveled to Mississippi and Alabama during the worst times of, in 1965, to help encourage the better life for African-Americans. And, but his 32 years in Congress, I think, were spent really concerned about the little, the little people, the men and women who go to work every day and raise their children and try to buy a house. He always had them at the forefront of his thought, and I did not realize he'd become 100 years old. And he was a great, a great champion, great American. I have two announcements to make. The first is that my office is Seventh Annual Active San Mateo Conference, is October 22. This year's theme is called Words from the Wild, and our keynote speaker will be a guy that I just really enjoy reading on a regular basis, Tom Stinestra, the outdoors writer for the San Francisco Chronicle, two-time National Outdoor Writer of the Year. We'll also have a panel of experts for local recreation and how to enjoy our parks and our, especially our overnight parks and our camping parks. It is being held at the Belmont Library on Alameda de Las Pulgas in Belmont. It starts at 8:30, and it is October the 22nd. Please register by calling 650-363-4568, and we hope to see all of you there. It's going to be an exciting day with Tom telling us about the wilds of San Mateo County. And then lastly, I have a favor to ask of all residents in San Mateo County. As you, most of you know, we have been working in this board with two partners, the County Office of Ed and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, on a third-grade reading initiative called The Big Lift. We are one of the finalists in the Google Challenge, and if we place high in the voting, we will have an opportunity to receive $500,000 to help with The Big Lift. So here is what you do. You learn more at thebiglift.org and vote for us at votethebiglift.org. Votethebiglift.org. And I would like absolutely every one of you who believes in children and their ability to read, to vote for The Big Lift and see if we can get a half a million dollars to augment the program as it is currently underway. So thank you very much for your consideration on that.
When is voting end?
Voting ends October the 20th.
Can you vote more than once?
I would never suggest such a thing.
How many email accounts do you have?
There you go, there you go. With that, Will?
I actually voted this morning for that, and it said, I got a response back saying you have three more votes.
Really?
Yeah, so, which is to imply you actually can vote more than once.
Okay. Well, vote early and very often then. And with that, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Well, why don't you report out from closed session?
Thank you, President Groom. The board met closed session to consider the, all the items listed except for the anticipated litigation item that the board did not take up. There was one action the board took, it was a final action, and it was to authorize a settlement of a workers' compensation matter of Jennifer Flahaven for $75,000. Actually, and now that I think about it, there's one other final action the board did take, and that is to settle with National Westminster Bank an amount of $210,000 and George Baum an amount of $75,000, both defendants in our, what we refer to as our municipal derivatives litigation. So that was also a final action. Unanimous.
Thank you, and with that, we're adjourned.